Thank you all for coming to the regular meeting of the City of South Fulton. We had a great King Day. Some of y'all were working, some of y'all were getting, but you should have been with it. The other thing I would like to say is that we do have Ms. Helen Willis back with us today. She's been out with her little missus. We're glad to have you back.
Happy New Year and Merry Christmas. I would like to say that I am happy to be back and I want to thank my colleagues and our state constituents who sent me cards and flowers and edible food and I had a community member to cook a meal. It was a strenuous health process, but I'm back and I'm ready to go. And I want to thank my mayor, who called to check on me every single day. When he didn't speak to me, he spoke to my husband. And I want to thank our chancellor for coming to visit me while I was in the hospital. And I want to thank my legislative specialists. Some of the residents say they didn't realize I was out. And the reason for that is because LaChandra kept my emails and my communication going. I feel a lot better, I'm healthier. And what I will tell everyone is pay attention to your body, because if not, your body won't pay attention to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Glad to have you back. Mr. Clerk, I want to close the executive session. I have a motion to close the executive session. Across the move, exactly, and to close the executive session, all the papers. Mr. Clerk, that passes unanimously.
And there was no action taken?
No action taken.
That takes you to the regular meeting agenda. Mayor William Bill Edwards?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mark Baker?
Present.
Councilmember Catherine Rowell?
Present.
Councilmember Carmody Padun?
Present.
Councilmember Helen Zee Willis?
Present.
Councilmember Naihimu Gilia?
Present.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson?
Here.
And Councilmember Cleve?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
We have a invocation by our pastor and all of our prayers. Let us all stand. Let us pray. How grateful we are for the things you always do for us and how you remind us of the goodness for your blessings for the return of our councilwoman Willis. So now we ask that you continue to do what you do. Bless us, keep us, strengthen us, pour your wisdom upon us, upon our elected officials, so that all that is said today and all that will be done will bless us all in this city of South Fulton. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, first matter for consideration is approval of the second agenda. You have three items to meet minutes from Tuesday, January 8th. A request approval of the amended agreement for an automatic aid agreement between the City of South Fulton and Union City 5. And third, a request approval of the City of South Fulton distraction free driving agreement.
I'll let you in motion.
I move that we approve the second agenda for today, January 27, 2019.
The proclamations, second, in discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor. That's unanimous.
Next item for your consideration is approval of the regular meeting agenda.
I'll let you in.
I move that we approve the regular agenda.
The proclamations, second, in discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor. Mr. Clerk, that passes unanimously.
And that takes you to the proclamations and recognitions. The first item is sponsored by Mayor Pro Tem Baker. I believe you have additional sponsors as well, right?
Yes, sir. I'm that councilwoman, Councilman Cleve. I'd like to ask Mr. Richard Wingo to postpone please. Y'all please give Mr. Richard Wingo a round of applause. Don't know who he is in the suit, but he's one of the bravest men I know, because he sings a song on the regular to "Meet Me at the Altar in Your White Dress." We ain't getting no younger, so we might as well do it. But, I mean, Mr. Wingo is a really good brother and a really good partner in the city of South Fulton outside of being a very, very famous entertainer, performer who's toured the world with the group Jagged Edge, representing South Fulton and our area for a long time. But Mr. Wingo has always also been a partner since the inception of our city, especially in District 7, helping with our toy drive and assisting with Cornerstone Church. He's just been a good partner as well as a notable individual in our city. And I just would like to honor him along with my colleagues, Councilwoman Gumm, because he is a resident of District 2, and I believe he went to high school with Councilman Cleve as well. But this proclamation is for Richard Wingo to read. City of South, proclamation, City of South Fulton, whereas Richard Wingo, formerly known as Wingo Dollar, graduated Tri-City High School with the likes of Candy Burris and many others, is a member of the American Music Award and Grammy nominated Platinum R&B Supergroup Jagged Edge, husband to his lovely wife Summer, and is a resident of the city of South Fulton. Whereas Richard Wingo and Jagged Edge signed future major degrees, so so bad to Columbia Records, has worked with artists such as Usher and Dolly, Toni Braxton, Rick Ross, and Brian Michael Cox.
Which paragraph? Oh, Richard Wingo lives by the motto, "If I can leave you with a smile, I've done my job," is also dedicated to extending his privilege and good fortune to those who desire a place in the business of music, television, film, and...
And whereas Richard Wingo, who embodies the spirit of altruism, as evidenced by his many philanthropic efforts within his community, is also a member of Brothers United, who is a committed and who is committed to the vision of using family engagement and social empowerment to strengthen families throughout the community, and he is also giving his time to District 7, Toy and Turkey giveaway at Cornerstone Fellowship Church. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of South Fulton do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 22, 2019, as Richard Wingo Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton. Sing a song.
We got one. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank you guys, man, and the entire city of South Fulton for recognizing me. Old little me, thank you guys, Mayor Mr. Elwood, and Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Baker, and all the city councilwomen and men of Fulton County. Again, I just want to thank you guys. Any help you guys ever need and anything, please don't be afraid to call. Shout out Mr. Baker, whatever he has my personal number. And I'm just at the point in my life where it's time to get back. You know, I've been in the music business 20-plus years, and blessed to still be here, still working in the music business, entertainment business. And I just want to thank you guys again. Thank you so much.
Next proclamation, a proclamation sponsored by Councilmember Willis, a proclamation recognizing Seacorn Lee Elementary School today.
I would like to ask for our state representatives to come up, Representative Bodie and Representative Jackson, and I would point to you why. Any of the Seacorn Lee Elementary staff members. So I'm extremely proud of this District 3 school. And when I got elected, I connected with all three schools that are in my district. And one of the things that I asked the principals was, "Where are your behavior problems?" And also, the low test scores, and where do these children live? And what I will tell you is that, I'm not going to name the community, but the principal this year will be the community. And every year since I've been elected, the teachers, the administration have gotten on a school bus and gone into the community and provided school supplies, book bags, and even supportive services. And this year, we collaborated, not only with the teachers at Seacorn Lee and Camp Creed, Camp Creek Middle School, excuse me, we also pulled in our state legislators, who's responsible for our state budget for education, and we also pulled in our mayor. And collaboratively, we raised over $6,000. And we loaded up a school bus, we loaded up a school bus, when they loaded up a school bus and came into the community. And so we have to sometimes go into the community. We can't expect kids to come to us. And I also would like to say, this school has a lot of parental support. If you ever go to any of their functions, you will have to, I had to go home apart, Mark Carl walked up to the school one time for grandparents' day. And so that also makes a difference in the school's success. So, here's your proclamation, and I'm going to read. Whereas the Georgia Department of Education released the 2018 College and Career Readiness Performance Index, known as the CCP, the CCRPI, which measures schools and districts with a rating on a hundred-point scale. Whereas 2018 Seacorn Lee Elementary obtained a score of 74.6, which is a 12-point increase from the last year. And the second, and the second highest gain on the CCRPI in the Fulton County District. Whereas Seacorn Lee has shown significant improvement in English, in English Language Arts and Math, and a leadership team and staff to be recognized for their commitment to the student's success. Whereas Seacorn Lee Elementary School has also demonstrated a significant increase in the Georgia Department of Education 2018 School Climate Star Rating going from three stars to four stars. Whereas Seacorn Lee Positive Climate can be attributed to the support from parents, staff, and friends.
No, thank you all, and just thank you for your hard work in the community. It's just really good to see South Fulton schools doing what South Fulton schools, South Fulton schools can do. And it's exceeding the expectations, because I'm a part of South Fulton and the public schools, Vatic High, Class 95, I'm very happy about that. So, I'm so glad to see Seacorn Lee is doing what they're supposed to do, and exceeding the expectations and knocking it out of the box and continuing to be a bedstone of our community. So thank you all for all your hard work. And welcome back, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. Definitely. Good evening. I'm Kena Gathers, Principal of Seacorn Lee. As you can see, I brought a team with me. But before I begin, I want to say thank you, Mayor Edwards, and thank you, Councilwoman Willis. I want to introduce some of our staff members, because I can't do this alone. We, as the principal, have a lot that comes on our plate, but when you have a great, fantastic, outstanding team, and I use all of those adjectives, Mr. Cleve, I see you down there. But I wanted to acknowledge them as well, because this evening is about the entire community. So I have my assistant principal Denise Brown, administrative assistant Ulysses Smallwood, our counselor Yolanda Wilcher, CST, Templeco Parks, and our math coach Thomas Goome. So this is just part of the staff that works hard each and every day. And I will tell you, I was not surprised to see one of my parents and one of my students arrive this evening, because they are probably, when Councilwoman Willis spoke of the support each and every day, you would think they were a member of our staff. They come in, so I wanted to acknowledge the Grimes family, little Ethan back there. He's one of our pre-K students. So I say all the time to our staff members, our school is only as strong as the community that supports it. And we have a strong community. We have a strong district in District 3, and we really appreciate this honor and this acknowledgement this evening. Thank you.
And I want to acknowledge, I know he's not in his official capacity, but councilmember Ulysses Smallwood, favorite, he's also an administrator at the Seacorn Lee Elementary School.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, no. Can I get two rows?
Do you need to do two rows?
Maybe they do two. Maybe bring the cameras to the studio.
Right there.
Yeah. There we go. Come over, Ethan, in that window. Come over there.
You're short.
No, you're not.
You ain't short, I'm short.
You need a tutorial. They'll help you back up.
Tighten on up.
Good, good. Here first, Fulton County Schools. Good, okay, here we go, on three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Smile. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
I knew your one wasn't too good. I'm telling us something. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Member of the council, you have received 13 speaker cards. If the first four speakers will please approach the center aisle at this time, Mr. Jerry McRae, I may be saying that wrong, McRae? Okay, Ms. Glenda Collins, Ms. Cynthia Welsh, and Ms. Helen Garder.
All right, good evening. My name is Jerry McRae of District 7. If you guys wouldn't mind, would you take a look at that symbol behind you? You see that bird? It's a symbol of strength. Since we are in the plans of making our new city, I think we should be aiming at being a city of strength and a city of power. With that being said, I think it would be very important that we have some of the same things that the North have. I think it should be top priority that we, in the plans, that we put in the plans, that we have a model Georgia south side of the issue. Have nice shops, nice dining, nice places to go to. I feel like a lot of places around here, there's some par, but it doesn't really match a lot of the things that's open on the north side of Atlanta. And that's my point I'm bringing today.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. Glenda Collins, Phil Wood. I attended a commissioner's meeting, and there at the commissioner's meeting, Commissioner Donnell spoke on variance. There were many people there that were complaining about their taxes. At that time, it gave me an opportunity to think about variance and what it meant. A variance is a request to deviate from current zoning requirements. If granted, it permits the owners to use his land in a way that is not permitted by a zoning ordinance. It is not a change in the zoning law, but a waiver from the requirement of zoning ordinance, which is used extensively in our county and city. The variance is used to build large houses in new subdivisions, expand smaller houses that tower over existing or smaller homes that also will or may encroach and reduce the size of your lot. So when the taxes are calculated based on a roundabout way of zoning, then the property is calculated on the property of properties you gave a variance and not the house and property that you own, and you have owned for many years. Why would you pay property tax on the variance of zoning and not on the actual property itself, which you have made no improvements? This process is unfair and unequal way of taxing property in Fulton County and should be addressed. The areas is littered with trash and dumping, which is a major problem in the area, and that is out of control as well. Sliver crimes are on the rise. These things need to be addressed as well as the variances that are issued to these companies without thinking which may reduce the parking and also reduce the areas where you have to enter and exit on the streets. Thank you.
Ms. Garder's going to go next.
Good afternoon. I'd like to say, I live next door to the dump, and I am very disappointed in what each county, state, or anything has helped me with or done anything. Since September the 20th, I have no pleasure of getting out in my yard or doing anything without a mask on. And I can't believe the county and state has let me down. And each time that I have called, they say a certain date this will be taken care of. Well, it has not been since September the 20th, and I want something done, and I want it done now. I don't know what I will have to do, but I will. If you can't help me, somebody will. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Cynthia Welsh. I am an attorney with my own law firm in Palmetto, Georgia. I've had the privilege of serving South Fulton and North Coweta Counties for 11 years. Ms. Garder, whom you just heard from, came to see me in October and made me aware of this problem with the landfill fire next door to her. And there are just a few things I wanted to bring to the attention of the council. I was not aware until last night that there is an existing Georgia Environmental Protection Division order that has been adopted by the Superior Court of Fulton County. And in reading that order, I was completely flabbergasted to learn that the EPD has been involved with Mr. Bullock and this site since July of 2013. There was a consent order that he signed in July of 2013, agreeing to reduce the materials that were on the site and to comply with the solid waste rules and the Georgia clean water rules. He submitted a notice of completion in July. A few days later, said, "I've done what you asked me to do." In August of 2014, the EPD said, "No, you haven't." And then nothing happened until June of 2017. And this is all detailed in the, well, in the order. I have a copy of the council members with LiveMark. So, a year later, EPD said, "No, you're not in compliance." And then nothing happened until June of 2017, when that EPD received another complaint about the amount of solid waste of the property. Now I will tell you that in the consent order in 2013, he agreed to not only remove what was there, but to stop receiving additional waste. None of that happened, it continued to pile up. If any of you have seen it, it is massive. In July of 2017, the EPD issued a notice of violation, gave him 30 days to remove all the solid waste. And later that month, he told them he was in full compliance and would submit a letter responding to their notice of violation, which he never did. Nothing happened until the, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say nothing happened. EPD visited those sites in August, September, November, and December of 2017, documenting the accumulation. May have visited from January through July of 2018. They may have visited from January through July of 2018. And then the fire happened. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Would council care for copies?
Yes. Ms. Gina Yildin, Mr. Chad Regan, Ms. Betty Bartos, and Mr. Michael Venable. You will please approach the center aisle.
Good evening. I live at seventy-four forty Herndon Road, which is about a half a mile from the landfill that's been burning since September the twentieth. Um, since that time, we haven't had any kind of resolution to get the fire extinguished. We have been given promise after promise as far as it's gonna be done, it's gonna be done. He's going to jail, he's coming out, he's gotta do this, he's gotta do that. The last time that we met with the city attorney, she told us that he was, when he got out of jail that particular time, that he was to have contact with the company that was, um, that they had found for him, that was a specialist in putting out this type of fire. And he had forty-eight hours to do that, and they would be, he would have to get a contract with them in order to get the fire put out. That still hasn't happened. When he got out, he started trying to do it on his own. The fire is still smoking. I haven't seen anybody over there even trying to attempt to do anything. And since at least Saturday, if not before that time, um, he has a sign on his gate that says temporarily closed and reopening real soon. To me, that only is a slap in our community's face saying that, you know, even if I get this fire out, then I'm still gonna reopen. And our community, I've lived in that, at our residence for over thirty years. Ms. Goddard has lived there for over sixty years. We can't, it's almost like we're a prisoner in our own home because we can't get out because of the smoke and the smell. I can't have my grandchildren over like I did. My parents need to come visit. Um, they're both ill and, but they can't come because my mom has lung issues and she can't, I can't have her come out here and stay with me anymore. Um, this has been an awful situation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chad Regan, District Four. Um, I was here two weeks ago to echo many of the people's sentiments regarding Bishop Road landfill. This time, there, there are a few more people here to express their sentiments to the mayor and council. Um, after my comments, the fire chief did provide some additional information regarding all the pressure that they're placing on the owner, from the EPD, from Superior Court, just a variety of different tactics that they're trying to get the owner to resolve this particular issue. And my comment to the, the fire chief, well, is what if he doesn't do it? And that is exactly what we're seeing today. So I, I do believe January seventeen, there was a, a deadline for the owner to provide some type of status update with regards to his progress. Seventeen has passed. The status of it is, as you mentioned, it's still on fire, it's still burning. Putting smoke in our atmosphere right next to Bear Creek, Creekside, Atlantic West Elementary School. We've got about twenty-five students between the middle and high school, eight hundred students on the elementary school. So I started looking at the city charter, and I did see where there is provisions for the city to designate in an emergency situation. I reached out to the city manager. He provided some information that there, the city is working in concert with the EPD. Uh, but that's, that's not good enough. We're, we're here four months later and this thing is still burning. So I would wanna know, what is it gonna take for the city to take some leadership in putting this fire out? Is it, it's already been a local story, it needs to be a national story? Do we need to start a GoFundMe and go do it ourselves? What do we need to do to encourage the leaders of South Fulton to look out for the city?
And one more person here for District Four, Betty Bartos, in Ms. Gilliard's district, who has been trying desperately hard to get some answers on that landfill fire. We were supposed to have test results over a month ago, and, um, no test results were published. No management team was created, no task force updating the increasingly sick population. That young man earlier was asking, "How is the city of South Fulton gonna get some good businesses and look like the North part of the city?" Well, we have to clean it up. It's a mess. This stink, everybody knows about it now. All the news, every single news channel broadcasted it, and our property values have plummeted as a result. Nobody wants to live in that district and breathe this air. It's horrendous. You have to try it. Why was this reported as a wood fire? The stench says otherwise. The tests reportedly that the EPA is responsible for are supposed to test the air in approximately five locations of the property and over a twenty-four period, hour period, at least a couple of times for hundreds of chemicals and tests of the property as well, at the very least for benzene, to determine the kind of trash that's burning there. He said it was wood fire. It's not wood fire, it's trash. Reportedly, there are only three thousand landfills in the entire country, yet we have three of them next door to us. Reports say that eight thousand fires were reported, indicates four on average per facility. Given the entire likelihood of this very thing happening, why don't we have a task force in place for managing landfill fires in the state, let alone this county? One that would have known to communicate immediately with the U.S. Fire Administration? Did anybody even hear of them? To manage the managers. In September, the feds were not shut down. So you can't blame them for the lack of action now. There is a lot that can be done, but not if you're letting that facility to continue to operate and promise things he can't deliver. Any cursory study of underground landfill fires show anybody that a pro team is needed for this. When is this gonna be happening? Who is in charge of making it happen? When is the finger pointing going to end? Thank you.
Michael Venable, District Six. I wanted to point out, last meeting, that we gave someone an alcohol license with major and massive code violations. Oh, how wonderful this looks. You've got a building here with purple stack all over it. Guess what the law says? Article twelve D, three, seven, point seven. Those are the colors for your buildings. This is a blatant violation of the law. Oh, how wonderful. Mr. Mass, I don't know if you could blow that up or not. You got a little sign out here. Guess what? That's a sheet placed over intact on an old sign that should have been there before. What does the law say? Signs, structures, and faces constructed of wood and canvas materials are prohibited. It's a major violation. Oh, look at this. This is cute. A double-layered side on it. Let's see what the law says. The face of a side will be flat with protrusions no more than two inches. Go down further when you talk about having knack, nails, tacks, and wires protruding from them. Oh, look at this. We just got battered side and everything all over it. Sat up there with everybody gathered. What does the law say? Article thirty-three, twenty-four E two, only one side per business allowed per wall. Look at this. We just took a drive-through, put tables and chairs out there, ignored every kind of building setback that ever exists. These are the things that you're looking at when you're talking about doing this comprehensive plan. Go back. Blow that up if you could. You put a building in the back of it. This building, the, the whole plaza is already over the square footage that it should be. So let's break this down since we all talked about being our ethics cell. You've made a building look like a strip club and a trap house. You rigged the sign in front. You just came back and took over the driveway and a parking lot and made something. You put a shack in the back of a shop and plaza and you thought nothing was wrong. This is just dead wrong. You've got a cliff over here and you've got a landmine here. You should have gotten a sign permit. Either you didn't get it and you threw yourself off the cliff, or either you did and you didn't look at it and you blew yourself up. This is why this community will never have any good homes, any good schools, nothing in here.
For speakers, there are Ms. Elise Fisher, Mr. Michael Sharp, okay, Mr. Marcus Coleman, and Ms. Krista Price.
Well, um, my name is Elise Fisher. I live in District Four. Uh, last night, I also attended Councilwoman Gilliard's community meeting to learn more about the progress made in cleaning that Bishop Road fire out. Um, the meeting lasted for about ninety minutes, um, and I heard a lot of talk, but I heard almost no new information. Um, in that ninety minutes, the answer to almost every single question was, "I don't know." Um, I understand that these are new roles, uh, but it's been almost two years. Um, and that fire has been burning for more than four months now. Right? And four months, college students complete courses. Um, the utter lack of knowledge on display last night got me wondering whether or not we are making use of the education and training afforded to all newly elected officials in the state through the Georgia Municipal Association. So my request is simple. Please share your course attendance information with us. Which courses are mandatory? Which courses are optional but strongly recommended? And which, if any of those courses, have members of this governing body attended? Please share. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Shapie. I'm in District Four. Hello, Mayor, and council members. Councilwoman Gilliard, uh, who has been active in, uh, addressing our issue. I'm here to complain and ask for your assistance, uh, about the fire that's on, on Bishop Road. It's been burning, as you've heard, for numerous months. Uh, the biggest concern I have is a, a health issue. Uh, there have been numerous, numerous reports written by the EPA and other organizations, universities and such about the types of materials that are emanating from this type of a, a low-temperature burn. Uh, the, the most significant are particulate matters, uh, particulate matter. Um, it has, it can be so bad that it looks like snow foam. You can actually see deposits on, on vehicles. Uh, the next one is, uh, polycyclic organic matter. It's something that is, it's a carcinogen. It's a, it's created when you have a low-temperature burn of organic material. These, these are in our air, we're breathing them. I have to wear a mask. I have to wear a mask to go out to my backyard. The smoke is so bad. I've had reactions to the smoke. It makes, uh, you become sensitized to certain chemicals. And I have become sensitized to certain chem, that chemical. When I go out in my yard, my throat starts to swell up and I start to lose breath. It's scary. I have to wear this when I go outside. I have to put special filters on my house. I've now gotten high-efficiency filters for my house. That's an expense I have to pay for. The smoke comes into your house. You can smell it on your clothes. This is a hazard for us. It's a toxic, it's noxious. It has to stop. Um, I'm concerned not only for my own health, but for the health of my family, my granddaughter, the students at the, at the high school. Bill, you've been, uh, uh, in, uh, involved in the council for, for many times. You, you've been to the Bear Creek community. You know, I've been, uh, assisting coaching at this, the school. I've been involved there quite a bit. I'm concerned for the children there. We may wanna consider getting, uh, uh, considering closing these schools until we can provide clean air for them. Many other, uh, comments, but I have to end. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You can ask four speakers, but please approach the podium. Mr. Marcus Coleman, Ms. Krista Price, and SSG, please.
Good evening. Uh, first, let me publicly thank Councilman Khalid Kamal, Councilman Mark Baker, and, uh, Tim Mark Baker that participated in the operation Break Bread a couple of weeks ago. Awesome event still being talked about. It's ironic that the topic had to deal with the political rights of convicted felons. Uh, I would also like to thank the six members of council minus District Three for, uh, approving the nomination of, of me to the Ethics Board. The reason I say it's ironic because that event dealt with the political rights of convicted felons. I make it no, uh, farce that, that is me. And, um, it's troubling some of the rhetoric that I hear that is allowed coming from this city as it relates to convicted felons and their political rights. That's another time for another day. I'm here on behalf of the death of Marcus McQuary, a fellow Westlake High School member. I'm here on behalf of victims of hit-and-run. Thursday, we celebrate the death anniversary of my little cousin out in Cobb County, totally unrelated to here. We're actually in the process of changing legislation in the state surrounding the penalty caused by victims or caused by those who, uh, create the act of hit-and-run. Well, I'm here to unfortunately charge the South Fulton PD with hit-and-run. I want to make that point. I reached out to Chief Meadows prior to me coming in. We, we had a talk just recently back there, at least two months prior. It wasn't my position to come in here and talk negatively about the police department without sitting down with him first, but there was no response. Marcus McQuary was found after laying dead in the bushes for five weeks on Flat Shoals Road here in the city of South Fulton. Marcus McQuary was a victim of a pit, let me rephrase. A pit maneuver was done on a vehicle that ended up crashing, spinning out of control, crashing into a pole, and hit a pedestrian, totally unrelated, killing him, and that was Marcus McQuary. Only got five seconds, but the lackluster investigation into that accident is disheartening that a man lay dead. Mayor Edwards in the bushes for five weeks, being a victim totally unrelated of nothing of his own. Last point, two seconds. I would like to, and a lot of people would like to see some policies put in place, Mayor Edwards. When do we practice that controversial pit maneuver considering it's a highly and heavy pedestrian, uh, pedestrian street? People are walking up and down Flat Shoals Road. It would be great if we got involved in the conversation how dangerous pit maneuvers can be, not just to the public, but to property and also the other officers, justice for Marcus McQuary. Thank you, Mark.
Hi, my name is Krista Price. I'm in District Seven, Oakley Township. And I'm having concerns. I have a thirteen-year-old son, and there are no recreation centers that I know of in the, in no Boys and Girls Club. I was wondering if we could somehow get some sort of, um, activities or some type of, something that the kids can do to stay out of trouble. Second is the gang activity that has increased within the past month or two. Um, it seems that everyone knows where they're located and where they're coming from, the schools that they attend, but nothing is being done. Or maybe there is something being done, but I don't know, the root cause. I heard the OTs, um, that they're at, uh, what's the Creekside High School? So if we can just go around and ask the kids, "Who are these members?", then perhaps we can get them off the streets or get them some type of rehabilitation or something to stop this crime that's increasing in our nice neighborhood. And third, um, speak, piggybacking on what Jerry spoke about, uh, we have no farmer's market. We have to go, well, I have to go all the way to Decatur to my Decal Farmer's Market. Um, to get, to, for a farmer's market, we have no, all these, no Whole Foods, none of that in the city of South Fulton or on the South Side. So hopefully, within the building of our city, we can get some good stores and fruit markets, some good fruit and healthy fruit markets. Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt here, that's the last speaker.
To the mayor and to the council board. My name is Sergeant Pruitt. I'm in Hillandale, District Six. Um, have a few, uh, some of the homes in the, uh, area, like twenty-eight oh-two, twenty-eight-ten, twenty-eight-twenty, those areas, they are dumping trash in there and it's just, it's just a big nuisance in the community. Uh, twenty-eight-thirty-one Spruce Point, that house has been empty for about nine years. Kids going in there, it's a dangerous home. So nobody seemed to, seemed to get a handle on it. Nobody seemed to know who paying taxes on that house. So we need a, we need a, uh, problem resolved on that. In the community, uh, Carriage Lane, we put, you put speed bumps in there to kinda cut the speed, but the, uh, they are taking Ocean Valley now to use it as a speed thing. So they're running up and down Ocean Valley thirty and forty miles an hour, and some kids gonna get killed in that area right there. Also in the, in the community, lots of cars, like twenty or thirty percent of the cars in there have paper tags and every so often, they change those, change the dates on those tags. And, uh, we need somebody to resolve that. Thank you.
Sergeant Pruitt speaking. Uh, this is Detective Lee, I give you two minutes. Press the quick. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, Sergeant Pruitt, please don't leave and the, and the, uh, the members of the Hillandale community. Uh, Jacobs is here tonight, and we are gonna be talking with him, so I wanna make sure that you connect with Jacobs. We did, um... We did walk the neighborhood this week, and we used the C-Click Fix app, so there are dozens of reports, Mr. Valenswela, from Hillandale. And then lastly, to the young lady who spoke about the farmer's market. Before being elected, I and a group of folks started a South Fulton Food Policy Council, and we will be having a farmer's market. It is actually going to be at District Three. You can find out about the Food Policy Council's farmer's market at KhalidCares.com, and under the Get Involved tab, you can sign up to get updates about that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Khalid.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that takes you to the public hearings on today's agenda. The first item is a public hearing and a request for approval of Gochet's Breakfast Bar for alcohol license for onsite consumption. And this is located at thirty-six ninety-five Cascade Road in District One.
Good evening again, Mayor and council. Again, this is a request for approval for alcohol license on-site consumption, mock beverage, wine, and distilled spirits for Gochet's Breakfast Bar at thirty-six ninety-five Cascade Road, Suite 400. This is in District One. As with all applications, this application has gone through inspection and has been approved by code enforcement, Fire Department, Fulton County Health Department, Fulton County School System, and the South Fulton Police Department. Based on approval from those entities, staff's recommendation is approval for this alcohol license request.
I look at the public hearing. Is anybody for or against this design? Hearing not, I'll close public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol license for Gochet's Breakfast Bar in District One.
Second.
The property moved to second. End discussion. Hearing not, I'll go to the favor. That passes unanimously.
That takes you to two cases, two related cases. One is a rezoning, and the second a concurrent variance. First item is Z eighteen zero zero nine, and this is a rezoning request in District One.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and council. The item for you tonight is a rezoning for property located along Camp Creek Parkway and Campbellton Road. The applicant, Mr. John Pierman of Santown Crossing, is requesting to rezone property that's split with the TR, C one, and C two zonings to allow for it to now be rezoned as C one. You'll hear of a concurrent variance request following soon after this request for CB eighteen zero zero one. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow for a commercial district, will be a shopping plaza, or the grocery store, as well as offices. And this is located in Council District One. As you're seeing here, this parcel has a number of zonings located here, but they're asking a rezoning to one conducive zoning of C one. You're looking at the site plan here. You're seeing about seventy thousand square feet of retail to the, I guess this will be considered your southeast piece here, and then to the northwest portion will be twenty square foot of, square feet of twenty, excuse me, retail and offices, sorry. There will be private streets here with four hundred and forty-five parking spaces. And the applicant request is similar to what was requested previously when we were incorporating Fulton County's parks as boundaries. The only thing different is removing the residential component. All of the surrounding zonings are commercial, office, and church, daycare. Basically, everything is commercial use, nothing is residential. The parcels that are undeveloped near it is protected by a buffer, and as I mentioned before, is located along the major node of Campbellton Road and Camp Creek Parkway. The comprehensive plan does support this request. So staff in support, as well as what the planning commission recommends approval of this rezoning, but as a condition, we're asking for it to be approved based on the November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, site plan. Thank you.
Time out. Time out of the public hearing. Anybody for or against? Anybody here? I know a judge.
Good evening. I'm John Pearl, and I am the applicant. Staff has done an excellent job presenting this, and I am happy. I have a speech. I got my banner ready. I got my clicker ready.
Stay with John on the speech.
Same. Got it.
All right. Anybody against this? Is there no one against it? I throw a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the rezoning Z eighteen zero zero nine, applicant Santown Crossing, District One.
Property moved to second. End discussion. Hearing not, all those in favor. That passes unanimously. Thank you, John.
Sir, Mayor and council, this request is in conjunction of a previous case that you've heard, is a concurrent variance AT zero zero one for properties located along Camp Creek Parkway and Campbellton Road. Just a reminder of what a variance is, it necessarily presents hardship for the applicant when it comes to development. And so I will point out some of the concerns for the site, so that it will be consideration for tonight. So I want to make note, there's at least nine variances being requested tonight. The reason being that there are so many is because our code is a little outdated, and we are in the process of updating that, so I don't want you to be alarmed with the number that's here. But a lot of this will change in our update. One of the updates that has recently been done is for five and six. So you'll see that recently, five and six, you all unanimously adopted to update the Santown overlay. So the items identified in the yellow area is no longer needed, but the applicant has submitted before those amendments. Okay? All righty. So for the parts one and two, again, as I mentioned, those were previously identified and issued for the site some years back. But the applicant is asking to allow for the removal of a tree buffer, as well as to allow for a reduction in the landscape strip. And that's for the purpose of, as you're aware, CBS is located on this site. They're asking to allow for the matched development, allow for it to be conducive to what's currently out there already that was previously approved many years ago. All right, three, building height. They're asking to increase the building height. The property has a top hole or a sloped area that has, or the property kind of fall back a little bit, so they're asking to increase the height to allow for its visibility. Staff has recommended approval of both, well, all, one, two, and three of that request. And number four, so fenestration. They're requesting to reduce from twenty-five fenestration to fifteen, as you know, that includes the windows and the doors. And we're asking for that to be approved to allow for the entire furniture of the entire parcel, excuse me, the entire structure to have fifteen percent. Parcels with five through eleven, as I mentioned before, five and six are already identified and approved through your overlay that's been recently adopted. So seven through eleven is asking for there to be an increased illumination for lighting, as well as shoebox. So recently, originally, the staff had asked for there to be a change in the supermarket portion to allow for that piece to be twenty-five, but we're now recommending to also go after the same request that the planning commission had to allow for it to be at twenty-five, at fifteen percent across.
Fifteen across.
Right. That's correct. So with that being said, staff has recommended approval of parts one through four and parts seven through eleven. That concludes our vote.
Okay, I'll open.
I'll look at the public hearing. All those for and against? Anyone against?
Again, a battle vote, and thirty-five.
Okay. No one against? Okay, I throw the public hearing. I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve concurrent variance CB eighteen zero zero one, applicant for Camp Creek Parkway, District One, and my modest staff.
Second. Property moved to second. End discussion. Hearing not, let's vote. Mr. Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This will be a project that satisfies the first speaker's requirements.
We're going to hold you to my call.
Thank you.
You're okay, Mary. I'm going to add you down.
Okay. That takes you to the first resolution. The final page two, resolution for confirmation of ethics board member eligibility and for other lawful purposes. This is co-sponsored by Mayor Edwards and Councilmember Willis, Resolution two thousand nineteen zero zero three.
Oh, the word should be attorney and then I'll speak, that's never internal to me.
So, Mayor and council, essentially, this resolution authorizes the city manager to assign appropriate staff to vet the eligibility of the recent appointees to the ethics boards, and it additionally allows him to outsource within the current budget he finds if there is a service that's required that we can not accommodate in-house.
Okay. The areas that will be confirmed, and this is all Brian, from the attorney in residency prior to during their tenure, and contracted government and employee relationship, unrestored felonies committing crimes of more interpretive age, and public official mental disability, non-registered voter restrictions. So we met with the attorney, city manager, and we, at one point, thought we would have to bring in a third party to procure services, but we talked with the city manager, and what he did say is that the current HR process allows for background checks to be outsourced. And so we can pretty much use our internal process. If there's any part that requires any additional services, he is sure that he has the money in his professional service budget, and it'll be very minimum, and we will procure it out. Did I explain that accurately, Mr. Donald?
Well, I would say is you do the background checks and all that stuff internally, but all of the areas that are required by ordinance could be done through HR or the services that they normally do.
No, that's correct, as stated by the city manager and council board.
I always think of the ethics board and the board that are above all boards, and so I'm remembering what the districts want to do. I just, I also think that, as I've been asking around other municipalities, I mean, knowing many, a lot of municipalities look for every board. They really do. I have some qualifications in terms of background, so as we look at this, we may want to think of the future that we hear from all of them.
And I just want to highlight one thing. This is not anything that I'm asking to do out of the ordinary. Section one, it says, based on the current criteria within the city's ethics ordinance. So this process will be used to qualify our appointees based on the current criteria outlined in the ethics ordinance.
Ms. Ron.
I would like to point out that section one, hereby directed within forty-five days of this resolution, we do be open to amended future appointments so we don't have to come back, because it's only for this time, this set of appointments?
This is specific to the ethics board. Now, we want a resolution to address other boards. Would you do that? But this is specific to the ethics board.
Right, I'm saying, so if you have a future appointment to the ethics board, this particular board, I'm saying, can you amend, would you be open to amending it? Because this is in forty-five days or after this pass? It makes, it makes it notable.
I think that forty-five days came from the attorney and the city manager, because we have eight people we have to certify, and so to be fair, and to give them enough time, it would take forty-five days. Are you referring to like if we have to...
Like a future appointment to the ethics board?
I think what Councilwoman Rob made, I think it may be that circumstance, or if there's an appointee who is declared eligible, would the city manager still be responsible for facilitating the process for the new appointee?
What I'm trying to get to is, in forty-five days period, whenever we have a nomination that you're going back, it says a clock, but it's not limited just to this set of appointments. Is there some language we can add to clarify within forty-five days of any appointment to this ethics board that they go through this process?
Yeah, I don't think that's unreasonable. I could easily put language in there that says that whoever the appointee is, and he has it forty-five days to bring back to the confirmation of eligibility.
Okay. Any further, I don't see anybody in the queue. I'm in the queue a lot of times.
So I guess the language I'm asking, to make a motion, the city manager is hereby directed within forty-five days of appointment to the ethics board, oh, no, forty-five days to confirm the eligibility of city ethics board appointees through appropriate city personnel. It's just not saying this resolution... Do you think that addresses the issue? That's on line thirty-three.
Mr. Bass, you wrote it down. Can you repeat that, Mr. Bass?
I would trust you to repeat it, but Rob, and I believe you said within forty-five days of appointment, the staff, appointment by the city manager will confirm eligibility?
I don't want it to go there after this.
So what I would do, since it's been a little bit of time has passed since the prior appointments, if we establish forty-five days for everything, it's really only going to give him, what, twenty days for the ones that were appointed previously? So my recommendation would be based on what you've stated for your motion to be to approve this resolution, with the exception that we include language that instructs the city manager to vet future appointments in addition to these within a forty-five day period.
Okay.
Let me, uh, somebody's queue's not working. Yours not working. Okay, come on. Are you finished?
I'm able to use the language that she suggested.
Okay. You go. Why don't we just, for a minute, get that out of the way?
I move that we...
I think I'm going, Rob moved, and she moved to second.
He's in second. Now we have discussion. Mr. Khalid.
I have a separate motion, so I won't wait.
Are you trying to get in? We have a little technical difficulty, so don't hear it, Mr. Yack.
So I really want to be clear. So we're talking about the eight, we're talking about the eight people that have already been submitted for appointments, and anyone who comes after them. Is that correct?
Right. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. We're hearing now on this issue, okay? On the motion that's on the floor, let's take a vote. That passes unanimously. Okay? Mr. Khalid?
I have a motion. I would like to make a motion. I am not sure that the people listed in this ordinance have a legal background to expertly adjudicate the moral turpitude clauses of our ethics ordinance or the state. And so I would like to make a motion that we direct both the city manager and city attorney. So I just wanted to add on line thirty-two, the city manager and city attorney are hereby, so we're correctly correct. So that is, I need to add the city attorney to the people directly.
I said.
Property moved to second. Discussion.
You have something to say? The city attorney?
No, I was just saying that Mr. Donald and I usually coordinate together, so this change would really be...
We coordinated this resolution.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. Any further discussion on this issue?
I'm a little bit...
Well, no, there's a motion in the second. So we just don't, I'm going to vote.
I got you.
Let's vote. That passes unanimously. And now I need a vote, too.
I move that we approve Resolution number twenty nineteen zero zero three, a resolution for confirmation of ethics board member eligibility and other lawful purposes. As an...
Property moved to second. Properly moved the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all goes to favor. That passes unanimously. That passes unanimously, Mr. Yag. All right.
Resolution for the assumption and continuation of T-Slot agreements within the city of South Fulton and for other lawful purposes, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero zero four.
I'm gonna take a vote. There are some technical difficulties, I said that before. Okay, Mr. Yag, go ahead.
So I read the resolution, and I want to talk about the process, because T-Slot is over seventeen million dollars for this fiscal year, and that's a lot of money. Um, and once again, we're being asked to pass a resolution without any specific agreement, and to bring the agreement maybe at our next council meeting, and this is what occurred with our public works, because we passed the resolution, and then the contract came to us. And when the contract came to us, it had some issues with it, and we were backed up against the wall because we needed to transition the services over to us very quickly. So there are a number of items in this resolution that, um, that I find a little disturbing. And one of them is that it appears from all the language that we're still going to be in a, in a government agreement with the county who's going to keep our money, and it appears to provide the services. Um, there is a discussion about an assumption agreement. We have an example, but we don't really have what the agreement is. And it's reference to Article B and C, which we don't have a copy of to read before we vote yes, no, or maybe so. There is reference to the state of Georgia as being the consultant, and then when you read further, you don't know if the consultant is the state of Georgia or Fulton County. Um, it says the county has agreed to transfer funding to us via an IGA adopted on December nineteen, uh, twenty eighteen. Counselor hasn't seen that, we haven't seen that memorandum of understanding. Uh, in addition to that, um, the Georgia T-Slot law says that if the county, um, goes to the state, that our funds can come directly to us, which means that we don't have to go through the county. So I don't understand, um, why we want to go through the county. So then later on, there is discussion about invoicing and payment, and that it will go to the city manager and public works, but that's about money, when you talk about payment, the finance is not listed there. I want to make sure that I don't forget any of them. Oh, and it says that the city managers are authorized to enter into and execute an assumption agreement, well, it really says agreements, with entities contracted with the county for T-Slot projects, and the assumption agreement can be modified by the city manager and attorney. And so there's a lot in this resolution that we don't, a lot that we don't have to give a vote.
Mr. Manager, at this time, says to me?
Oh, so yes, um, and so I think it would be appropriate for the attorney to provide some insights, but I can give you some high-level activities related to it, uh, pretty much.
Well, I just wanted questions, some could be answered, and if not, that's sensitive if I take another course.
Well, I think those, uh, those questions are all valid, and so there's not an issue with answering them now. I, I won't speak on behalf of the attorney of why she asked regarding the assumption, but I think for us, it's pretty simple. So those, uh, agreements that exist with Fulton County allow us to continue operating with the same exact vendors. So I don't know how many total contracts, but it's safe to say there are ten, right?
Well, I think for, for T-Slot, we have, it's either four to six.
So let's say six agreements. Yeah, but we have multiple, and we have multiple agreements, and instead of bringing them all to the council, they've been budgeted, they're under the T-Slot agreements, and the funding still comes from the, uh, county and being distributed to all of the cities. So the existing IGA that the county has, we just become a party to that, is that correct, Mr. Valenzuela?
Yes.
And you can give them all the insights.
Agreed, Mayor and Council. With regards to this, uh, resolution, what our attorney is presenting to you is to continue with five contracts that are directly with T-Slot. By doing that, we will have the ability to continue with the design of, of the current T-Slot projects that were stopped during the transition, as well as to continue with the transportation, with the resourcing projects with C W Matthews, that we're currently doing it in two thousand and eighteen. This will allow us to continue with those type of projects through two thousand nineteen and so on, as well as we have another contract with CEI, which is the inspection of those projects. So this will allow us to have the designers onboard, the inspectors onboard, and resourcing projects underway without more interruptions since the transition from Public Works of Fulton County to, to the city of South Fulton. So those contracts will be managed by, by the city of South Fulton. We will be, anything new coming out, we will be assigning, uh, contracts to them if that's the best option to go. But in, in essence, we will be saving time and money by, by assuming those contracts.
I have a question, Mr. Donald. So our seventy million dollars is still to be held by Fulton County possession?
Initially, yes.
When you say initially, what does that-
So the funds are collected by the county, so just like every other city that has a T-Slot project, those funds go to the county first, and then they are distributed for projects. And so the conundrum that we have is as the last city, we were not a, a, we were not privy to the IGA that the county did with the other South Fulton cities. So we are entering into these agreements on the back end, but they have contracts that already exist. So capital funds have been there, remember we distributed the status of the T-Slot projects? So those projects based on transition have been halted. So those responses that we've been providing to y'all saying that this is paved and is sixty percent complete, but there's no action, or this one has made it through the design phase, but it's not on track for nineteen, those instances will be solved by us assuming the contract versus procuring them again. Since Fulton County has already procured them, we are asking to be able to take on their contract and continue to work with no deviation from what has occurred.
So the Georgia, so the Georgia law says that we can go to the Department of Revenue and bypass the county and get our own, we have the money come directly to us, that's number one.
Got it, Paul, right there, okay, that's not-
Let me give you number two. Number two is if it goes through the county, we're still going to have to pay some overhead for it to go through the county. Either three percent, anywhere from three to five percent.
That's not correct.
Well, that's what it says in, in the law.
But what I'm telling you is we met with them through transition, and so we met with the Department of Revenue. I will tell you, we had an extremely heated call with Fulton County, and I'll call his name, Mr. David Clark, so you can follow up with him, because I vehemently disagreed. And after we disagreed with them, he set up an independent call with us, with the Department of Revenue, and they told us the same exact thing. It is because the, uh, of the, the agreement between all of the South Fulton cities, we would either have to everyone re-enter into that IGA to make us a party, or amend it and allow us to participate. Literally, we had this conversation during transition, and, and-
So how much are we going to have to pay the county?
So I don't believe there's an overhead, is it because the-
We will not be paying to the county anything. It, it is like, and you will have a separate bank, but we will, we will be withdrawing the money from the, from Fulton County. All the T-Slot funds belongs to the city of South Fulton. We will not, they will not be holding anything.
So can I, just to clarify, so when this agreement was executed prior to the council and committee hall between the Fulton County and the other cities, they agreed that Fulton County would take a percentage of the entire pie. So Fulton County is currently receiving a overhead administration fee, but it was from the entire percentage. And then they established after that fee is paid to Fulton County, what would be the individual percentages that were allocated to each jurisdiction. Under that agreement, the percentage that was owed to South Fulton was designated for Fulton County. So for us to have those funds instead designated to us, we would have to join all the parties to that agreement and have the agreement redone to where we would work out either the, it would be almost near impossible to retroactively take away the administration fee that was applied to the county. We could potentially work out something with the state revenue, but we would have to involve and get the consent of every city that was involved to redo that agreement, to restructure the money that would come to South Fulton. Um, administratively, it's easier to just get the county to agree that everything that was earmarked for South Fulton will be given strictly to us for just continuation of those projects.
So, um, my concerns, when we receive this package, and it has assumption in there, and there's red lines to insert, and you, city manager, and you, city attorney are going back and forth with how many contracts it is, and then you come up to the front and say that we have five contracts.
That's perfect.
Why do we not have this information in our package so we can intelligently make a decision on an assumption agreement? I think my problem with this is that we're, we're being told that this is consensitive, and then there's no information for us.
Right.
And we have to come to the council meeting to get that information.
Right.
Nothing was given to us prior to that. So my, my uncomfortability with this is that the information is not there. And I don't know why we will put a resolution in this package with a bunch of inserts for us to do, that's just not cool to me. And I don't know if you all can add to that, but-
Absolutely, so councilmember on, and I'll call out the dates for you, we provided T-Slot updates throughout this process, so the full list of T-Slot projects have already been provided. So I believe that when staff submitted this request, it is really just to allow us the authority to assume those existing projects and keep the projects moving forward. It is not a change in any of the T-Slot project, there is no, uh, change in the funding, there is no change in even the administration. It is just allowing us to assume the contracts. So practically, what it will result in is instead of Fulton County implementing the contracts here, funding them and doing everything, it now only changes to that the invoices come to the city, so that the city is the inspector of the work, the person checking it off, and then it is paid in that manner. That's the only deviation from what you had done the previous two years of transition. And so for that reason, it is, what you're basically doing in, in being practical is, without going through all the technical stuff, is allowing us to be the signature authority versus the county.
And I understand that, what I'm saying is that I have to come to a council meeting to get that additional information. Now regardless if you put it in, you know, packets six weeks ago, you are putting a resolution in front of the council with blanks in it. And that's all I'm saying, it would have been easier with some type of narrative as to what we were doing, but I'm coming to a council meeting, and this is where I'm learning this information, of what it means. So that's all I'm saying on the back end, it's just, we need, you, you can't put something like that in front of us, especially when it's millions of dollars, and it's in red meter, insert here, insert there, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Colley, um, I know this is executive, but I wonder, could we hold it for a week? I feel like we need to have more conversation about this, perhaps in executive session.
Uh, we could, I think the, the contracts expire February, and it's, it's some date in February that, that the contracts-
February first.
February, uh, I think the, the, I can tell you the reason that we use the template, because the plan was to get a form that the council's comfortable with, and then to use that form for each contract. So essentially, where you see insert, we will take the party that was subject to the contract and just put their name in, we would take the notice require, I mean, the, the notification addresses and just kind of tuck in, so everybody's contract, the, the goal is to have every contract be identical, so that's, that's the purpose of the template. Um, if you look at these contracts individually, they're about seventy pages a piece, so if we multiply that times, um, you know, whatever seventy times five is, it's a lot easier to just give you a template and say this is the, the framework that we want to move in. Um, I think what's significant here is that we've made it clear in this language that whoever we contract with, we're only going to pay you with money that's given by the county, so there is no risk of if we don't receive the county, these, these parties don't have advanced knowledge that we're not going to move forward. So this is entire, entirely county money that we're paying for, that we're paying for this with.
So, um, yes, thank you, I would just like to make the motion to hold this resolution until I'm asked to grant you a regular special call. Properly moved the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all goes to favor. That passes, put your hands up. Yes, you do. Go ahead, Mr. Yag.
Resolution enhancing public safety within the city of South Fulton, authorizing the execution of a lease for police purposes and for other lawful purposes. This resolution is two thousand nineteen dash zero zero five.
I'm gonna take a vote. I make a motion to hold this resolution to the next regular special call.
Second.
Properly moved the second, discussion?
Um, I, I'm not in favor of voting this, and the reason I'm not in favor of voting this, and, is because, number one, you and the city have given us, uh, six months, not six months, what, is it six months? That's the six months.
It is an increase, an increase in the cost effective in February.
So they have doubled, they have doubled the price that we are paying to use their courthouse, and they have told us that we have to be out in six months. Um, so we need-
Councilmember, I don't want to interrupt, but I think we can hold this conversation to executive session, folks don't really stop.
I don't think we should hold this, I think we need to move forward, so I would not be voting to pay for this, holding until the next meeting, this is something that we need to move forward.
Okay, um, have Ms. Jackson?
Um, I would just like to say, and it's a ditto, because this is becoming a pattern. We're getting contracts that we're asked to approve. We did Public Works, everything is just coming, and we have to do it right now. And that's putting us, not being able to take a look at things and sit down and go over things, yes, we heard about it, you know what I'm saying, previously coming up, but to just say voting on certain things at once, it's just a pattern, and we, every week, every two weeks, we've got something that we gotta do right now. So I do believe that we need to hold this until we have an opportunity to take a look, because there, even with this one, we don't have any, I, I, I saw, uh, where we're gonna be, and that's the old news, is what it's asking for, and I'm looking at twenty-four thousand dollars?
A month.
A month? Twenty-four, I don't know, but what I'm saying is-
We'd love to discuss it with the- We'd love to discuss it with the council member. If you guys are open to discussion, we'd love to discuss it.
Okay, so what are we paying now?
Alright, so the first thing is, I believe you're at around sixteen thousand now.
In Union City?
No, combined for police and court services. I'd give you insights. So I think one, I've heard you guys mention multiple times that it seems like we're bringing contracts for you to approve. So I want to make sure that we delineate the role of governance and the role of administration. It is our role to vet these activities, highlight the cost, and determine that we, if we don't bring you back the cost and the contracts and things of that nature, you aren't able to make a decision. And remember, it's our role to identify those activities. I think the second thing is, is since we are in transition, we are, while we've completed the bulk of transition, it should be noted that we are dependent on Fulton County for activities and we cannot control their decision-making. So if tomorrow, if Fulton County says, move on from this facility, then we actually have nowhere to go. And that is the same for the police facility that we're doing month to month. And remember, we're paying about fifteen hundred bucks extra a month for that premium so that we don't have a contract in the facility that we're currently at. As you know, at Union City, they've not only doubled the price, but they've given us only a six-month timeframe to even be in that facility. There are other negotiations and things that are planned in the background that you also have to consider. So I'd say it's, it's probably not completely fair to say we're bringing things at the last minute. We are responding to the situation that we're in. We currently don't have a police and court facility. And so now that we have a potential lease, we're bringing it to you. That moves me to the cost. When you talk about the twenty-four thousand, it is an up to amount and it includes the ability to not only pay the lease, but to roll the cost of improvements into the lease. So when you think about that and you think about what we will be able to do with the facility to build it out in a way that we be able to hold our court, potential public meetings, as well as have a police precinct, all in one central location, that cost is actually much more reasonable than anything else that we've received.
Okay, so I do still have the court. So this cost is going to be with the build-out as well?
Yes ma'am, absolutely.
I guess what I'm saying, to make it clear?
Mm-hmm.
That's not what this paper says?
Understood.
You all just have something blank up here saying twenty-four thousand dollars and we supposed to say, yeah, let's roll it?
So no, I think there's not only a resolution, but it's also a draft lease that should have been included as well. I'm pretty sure that's included in the documentation. It is, it's not? Is it?
No, it's not in.
It's not in here. We don't have any, that's what we're saying.
Got it. So then that's a, that's an omission in our transition to the clerk. Positive, it's not the clerk's fault. We, that's on us. And so I was not aware of that. I thought that the actual sub-lease, because that's where the actual up to amount came from, so they actually should have been submitted together. And so it is a draft sub-lease, because remember, it's not complete yet, but it's giving us the ability to enter into and finalize negotiations up to twenty-four thousand dollars. Yeah. So that, I think that probably makes it a little bit clearer for you. It's not just a lease, because that lease would be higher than what we're paying between the two now, but when you add in the build-out, that's the reason.
But if we have some clarification and some understanding?
Understood.
But just to hand somebody some paper saying...
I, I one hundred percent agree with you there. So again, that was an omission. I'm gonna say that was an omission on our fault and we'll just leave it there and we'll make sure to get you that information, but...
Thank you.
Mr. Councilman, Ms. Gump.
So I really can't, um, ask all of my questions because again, I didn't have the information. So all of the questions that I probably have are in that lease that I probably need to see, so...
God, so what this is, is asking for is the actual ability for me to continue to negotiate and move it forward and then you will still see the contract.
Well, um...
Is that not...
That's not what it says.
Ms. Gump, Ms. Gump still has the floor.
I just need to see what, what you...
Okay, Ms. Gump.
I'm finished.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kelly?
I, I think Mr. Donald, what would be more amenable to the council is in section, in section one, line thirty, it says the city manager is hereby authorized to negotiate. Oh, wait.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 it says the city manager is authorized to negotiate and execute it. So if, if we could, I will rescind my motion and make a new motion to strike execute and allow you to continue to negotiate, but we would like to see the, the contract executed.
I think what could also make it even easier is if you just punt until the next regularly scheduled meeting. While there is a time sensitivity to it, if we're not gonna handle it until the next meeting regardless, we can just leave it as is and just bring it back to you.
Well, what I would say is, you said up to twenty-four. So perhaps if we allowed you to continue to negotiate, you would have an exact number. You came back to it next week.
I, I just think that, so what I would say just technically, there doesn't have to be an authorization to negotiate. You just simply approve it. So authorizing me to negotiate a lease that we're already discussing, if you just hold it until the next meeting, we'll either have exact number or at a minimum you have the appropriate attachments.
Well, I rescind, I rescind my rescension. We'll just keep the whole motion that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Do what you do.
That was the motion, was that second?
Second, that was already second. Yes, we have it. We're still in discussion about it.
We're still in discussion, go right here. Well, I have Mr. Bigger next.
Right, uh, Mr. Donald, just for perspective, if you don't mind adding, uh, you used the number sixteen thousand dollars. Does that sixteen thousand dollar include our cost for this facility as well?
No.
Right, so you wanna add that in too, to add perspective to how much we're gonna be paying?
I apologize, you're correct. So what we would have, even at the twenty-four thousand is a net cost saving. So yes, you're correct about that. I, I would prefer though, to have this conversation in executive session. I think we're gonna punt on it and so it would be good to talk about it in executive session.
Alright, Ms. Willis, you have something to add.
Yeah, so the same questions or the same statements I made earlier. I was told that we had to wait for executive session and we just discussed everything that I just got finished. So I just would like to, uh, make a statement to my colleagues. Um, we get, we get this information on Friday and maybe we need to consider getting our packet, our agenda packages a little bit earlier because, because it is a lot of information. Uh, it is our responsibility to read the information, but I also would hope that we would do a better job of sending our questions before the council meeting because maybe if somebody had told the city manager or sent an email that we didn't have the necessary documents needed to approve this resolution or send out questions in advance of the meeting, then we may have gotten that information prior to the meeting and we would have been able to move forward. So, um, that's, that's it.
Okay. Alright, uh, let's vote. All those in favor?
It's on the motion to hold.
Yeah.
Oh, to hold.
That passes, you have it.
So Mayor, members of council, that takes you to the ordinance attention, all of which are for second reading. You have four items. The first item is sponsored by council member Jackson, ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero zero nine, and ordinance amending title fifteen, criminal offenses of the city code ordinances prohibiting panhandling, preserving the health and welfare of the city and for other lawful purposes.
I'm gonna take a motion.
Um, Mayor, I move, um, that we accept ordinance number two zero nine nineteen dash zero zero one, an ordinance amending the panhandling and, well, I, I would say like that. Because hopefully you all saw television last night, Georgia Tech.
Second.
The proper move to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, unanimous, Mr. Clark.
Number two, for second reading, sponsored by council member Rao, ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero zero two, and ordinance amending title twelve licenses, permits, and business regulations of the city code ordinances regulating soliciting and door-to-door sales, preserving the health and welfare of the city and for other lawful purposes.
I'm gonna take a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty nineteen oh oh two with amendment to line one eighty-nine to make the cutoff time fifteen AM.
Probably move to second, discussion?
So I've, I've read this ordinance thoroughly and I did not see any language, but I want to make sure, and this is a question to this city attorney, this door-to-door soliciting is not, I didn't see anything in the ordinance, but a constituent reached out to me and I told the constituent I was gonna break this question. Uh, this is not going to prohibit campaigning. This is not going to, this is only for sales of products, right? It's not gonna prohibit, um, uh, people going door-to-door for religious purposes or campaigning. I ask the attorney, I ask the attorney.
That is correct, I'm calling it, and I'm looking for...
Line sixty through sixty-two.
Yeah, so it says it's... It is not meant to raise the solicitation for charitable, political, or non, or nonprofit purposes. Uh, it is not applied to officers and employees of the city, county, state, or federal government when on official business.
Alright. Did we get a second on it?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote, please.
That passes, unanimous, Mr. Clark.
Rumor number three, for section reading, sponsored by council member Jackson, ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero zero three, and ordinance amending title fifteen, criminal offenses of the city code ordinances regulating convenience store loitering, preserving the health and welfare of the city and for other lawful purposes.
I'll take a motion.
Um, Mayor, I move, uh, the ordinance number two zero one nine dash zero zero three, um, be approved.
Well, Councilwoman, um, Jackson, we spoke earlier and you were, you were intending to amend, and you, like I can take the motion for you if you just move your purpose today about the city to agree. So that would be, the motion would be to approve, um, these subject ordinance, subject to amending subsection C, which is on, it starts on line fifty-six, to make this ordinance applicable to all convenience stores versus those holding alcohol licenses.
Probably move to second, discussion?
So once this ordinance is approved, I'm asking our police chief, can you please instruct your, uh, officers to strictly enforce that this and panhandling? This is a major problem in our city. And it needs, this needs to be enforced.
And Mayor, I just wanted you all to, if you go to a convenience store after what, thirty days or so? And you don't see these signs on the stores, because you should not see young men hanging out in front of stores and that type of thing. Men or women, okay? Please, um, this is what you should see. Thank you.
Okay. Um, first, it is, that passes, unanimous. Did I have further vote? Okay, I'm asking further vote now. That passes, unanimous.
That takes you to rumor number four, for second reading, sponsored by Mayor Protem Baker, ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero zero four, and ordinance amending title one, administration, chapter six and nine of the South Fulton code of ordinances to ban the box to help ensure that all qualified persons are considered for city employment and for other purposes allowed by law.
I'm gonna take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero zero four, ban the box.
Probably move to second, discussion?
Yes. I got another call from a constituent and, uh, I just wanted to explain, this is legislation that was, um, legislated, and he's humble about it, but he legislated this ban of box policy in Fulton County. And he had some of these same questions. Um, it does not mean that when someone is hired, they're not gonna go through a background check. Ban the box is the initial process, the initial process, meaning they don't have to check the box initially, uh, disclosing that they have, um, been convicted of a felony or crime. But they will go through a, they will go through a background check. And we are committed to hiring qualified people, um, in the city. So for all the constituents in District Three who have emailed me and was concerned about us not hiring the most qualified and ethical people, this does not prohibit that from happening. Thank you.
Okay, let's vote. That passes, unanimous. No, it's passed sixty-one.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is a discussion item, public works, projects, and services update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Go ahead.
I'm Wayne Wright. I'm the regional business manager for Jacobs Engineering Group. And as you know, we've been privileged for the last sixty days to help transition public work services from Fulton County. We've put together a great team to serve you and we've got a brief report to update you on where we're going and answer some questions. But I wanted to introduce the, the team members who are here now. Eric Guth is the transportation manager. He's the leader of our team here in South Fulton. He's a professional engineer with thirty years of experience. He's been a, a public works director and assistant city manager and has also led private sector contract services. Ray Knight is our deputy transportation manager. He's got a number of years of experience with Jacobs as well, leading, leading teams. Comes to us from, uh, a group in South Georgia, in Albany, I understand. Lamont Philpot is our field services manager. He's been with Fulton County for twenty-four years and he's a great asset, a great addition to the team. And Jim Gentry here is the traffic services manager. He worked for Fulton County in the past and the last ten years has worked for Jacobs running private sector traffic services. As I said, we've got a brief update for you and, uh, we're gonna let, let you know what's happening and answer your questions. And Eric Guth, Mr. Guth is gonna be presenting. Upon my podium, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to work with you and serve.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Uh, as Wayne mentioned, um, we're here this evening to give you an update on where we started, um, where we are and where we're headed. So we kinda came up with, uh, an analogy to crawling, walking, and running. So to start now, sorry. So in the beginning, uh, back in October, uh, twenty eighteen, the council signed an agreement with Jacobs to transition the public works from South Fulton, I'm sorry, Fulton County to the city of South Fulton. That agreement was signed on October twenty-third. Uh, we spent about three weeks speaking with the county employees that were working in public works and, uh, talked to them about transitioning over to the city and working with Jacobs. We started the, uh, public work services on November nineteenth. So this was nineteen working days, uh, from contract signing to when we started work. So this is our team, um, and this is all the things that we do in public works, uh, for the city. Starting from the left and moving right, uh, we start with transportation planning. So that's working with the, with GDOT and with the ARC, Marda, and others to, uh, plan the future improvements, transportation improvements in the whole city. Uh, this includes CIP projects, T-Splat projects, uh, as well that, I believe, uh, uh, L-Make projects are in there as well. Um, we also provide program management for those projects. Uh, that, that's construction management, um, as well as... as well as inspection services. The next box over is traffic maintenance operations. So we are charged with maintaining your traffic signals in the city, as well as the traffic signs. PMs there is the preventative maintenance activities to keep those signals operating properly. The next box is field services, that's all of your roadway maintenance, putting pothole repairs, picking up illegal dumping, street sweeping. We also have thirty-two miles of dirt roads we maintain, drainage repairs, mowing, dead animals, and litter pickup. We also support the solid waste program through coordinating with the city, city staff, and also with the haulers, through the private haulers, helping with education to the public, and also development of that program going forward. We also will be providing some operational analysis, so working with the haulers to collect information, analyze that information, and bring that back to city staff and the council as to how the program is operating. Last, excuse me, lastly, we have stormwater management, working with EPD, Environmental Protection Department of the State, to look at doing an MS four permit for the city. This is going to require an application that we will help develop, as well as a stormwater master plan is required. Underneath that box, you'll see there's six requirements as part of that permit program, so we will be administering that program along with city staff to ensure that we're in compliance with permit. So where did we begin? This is, we have to crawl before we walk, it's got the message here. So in the beginning, as we mentioned, we had about three weeks to get started on transition, so we had to get equipment to do the work. And our goal is to lease and buy equipment for the, for the project, for the city, but in a short timeframe, we had to rent equipment. So we had all this equipment, winded, it's on-site, we use it daily to do our work. And we also needed to hire people, so we worked with the city and the county to help with the existing employees, to help them join our team, or join other teams in the area, but to help them get jobs and have a soft landing, as we all talked about. So there were fifty-three county employees at the time, three were on FMLA, so out of the fifty eligible for hire, we invited forty of them to interview, because there were others that made decisions either retirement, or they made decisions to go elsewhere. Thirty-nine actually did go through the interview process. We, we gave offers to thirty-three of that thirty-nine, and twenty-two accepted our offer. Since that time, six have chosen to move on, either retirement or to another job somewhere, and we've had one that we parted ways with. So that leaves us with fifteen county employees that are left from, from the initial thirty-nine that we interviewed. We also have hired local people in addition to that. We've hired thirteen equipment operators and maintenance operators, traffic technicians and sign technicians as well. We are in the process of hiring eleven more, and we also have thirteen more in the pipeline that we are considering as well. So our first month, we were in startup mode, as I mentioned, trying to figure out the city, trying to get all the people on board, get the equipment on board, deliver the services as we promised, and one of the things that I'm most proud about is that we were able to handle all the calls and emails that came in within the prescribed performance metrics, of course, parameters. So I kind of call it reaction mode, so we're reacting to these calls and these requests, which given the earlyness of this endeavor, I think it was very, I'm very proud of that. So here's a recap of all the calls that we've received to date. Not going to go through all these, but I'll highlight a few. So sanitation, so this is surrounding the solid waste and the new ordinance. We have filled in five hundred and thirty-five calls about solid waste. Couple of other ones that I would highlight is litter pickup, so we've had a hundred and twenty-four calls for litter pickup, and also a hundred and seven for illegal dumping. Potholes, we're at fifty-two calls on those. So out of the fifty-two, this is one of the pothole examples, so before and after photo, before on the left, and then the cold mix placed on the right. Common alpotholes, so we are in winter time, so we, the asphalt plants are not operating currently, and so we are using cold mix in the winter. We log all of these through our work order system, so we'll come back in the summer and cut these out and patch them appropriately with hot mix. Illegal dumping, another before and after photo. So this again, we had a hundred and seven of these calls. We have a grappler truck that we use to pick up most of this, along with the crews used to help clear this area. When it happens, excuse me, fill us more. Mr. Val's later. So next, we do have a street sweeping program, and we, I'll have a slide later to talk in more detail related to that. This is just a before and after photo. Next, we have traffic management for us. So this breaks up the different calls that we receive related to traffic signals primarily, but also related to school zone flashers, as well as beacons, independent from intersections. And then we also show on the, on the pie chart, emergency calls, so those are calls typically when the traffic signal is out, dark, we call it, or it's flashing, flashing red. Those, we respond to within eight hours, typically much sooner than that, and we have been a hundred percent on responding to those. That's a little over half of our calls to date, so a lot of that has to do with the winter time and the weather, and the one thing that we're doing to help prevent that in the future is the PM up there is preventative maintenance, and we'll be working on cleaning and repairing the controllers, as well as the hardware at the, at the signal. So here we are today, we're starting to walk, we are moving towards more proactive approach. And through that proactive approach, we have been developing schedules, instead of totally reacting to calls and emails, which we still handle, but now we have developed a four-week winter roadway maintenance schedule, for example. Also have developed a street sweeping schedule, dirt, dirt road maintenance schedules, and also we have a snow brush plan. So being more proactive about addressing some of the issues in the roadway. We've also lined up vendors and subcontractors to assist us with providing the service to the city. We've had several ride-arounds with council members, I think we've done four to date, and that's been very helpful to us, to hear your point of view, hear what is important to you in your districts, and what you're hearing from constituents. That helps us in our planning and our scheduling of the work, that's been very helpful to us. Also, most recently, we brought in over the last couple of weeks, a lot of help from Jacobs Associates around the southeast area, so Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, and I'm probably missing a few, like a couple from North Carolina. About thirty-seven and, or I'm sorry, twenty-seven in total have come in over the last couple of weeks, so we've had ten to twelve on a daily basis, and a total of twenty-seven over the last two weeks, to help us get ahead and catch up as well on some of the litter pickup, some of the roadway maintenance, they were doing some weeding, some edging, and other, and helping us with our roadway schedule. So the winter roadway maintenance schedule, that is litter pickup, it's a hundred and fifty-one miles, first off, that includes litter pickup, also brush cutting, which we do twice a year, so brush cutting, winter time's a great time to go in and cut the brush back when the foliage is off, it's easy to see, easy to cut. We typically like to do that in the early part of winter, and then again in the growth season in July. Vegetation management, we found there was quite a bit of dead wood and just vegetation that's fallen off, off of trees, limbs, et cetera, so we've gone in to pick that up. And then shortly, we'll be doing some weed spraying, so we haven't really done the weed spraying, but that'll be done before the growth season, so that'll be done probably in the next month, we'll be concentrating on that, in addition to the other things that we're doing. Street sweeping, again, this is done twice a year, we do it in the fall, after leaf drop, we got a layer start this year, typically we'd be out in front of this by probably about a month, but we started street sweeping on January seventh, and we, those are the major roads, so the arterials and collectors, and the ones with curb and gutter. So that is underway, making some good progress, and we'll be continuing that probably for another four weeks or so, to complete that for, for the fall. So dirt road schedule maintenance, so this is the thirty-two miles of dirt roads that we have within the city. The first thing that we did is go out and looked at all the roads, and put together a assessment of all the roads' condition, so this looks not only at the surface of the road, and the potholes and the ruts, but also looks at the drainage of the road, the ditch lines, as well as culverts, what, what kind of needs we might have. So drainage is extremely important on a dirt road, you've got to get the water off of it, otherwise you're going to have those problems. So that started on January tenth, the weather has not been real kind to us, with wet, wet, with wet weather, you can't really do any of this work, you end up making mud. So we are hoping for better weather shortly, and they'll be back after it. So we are working on a priority basis, based on our assessment, so we're working on the highest priority and working way down to the lower priority ones that are in better shape. The snow and ice management plan, we have submitted that to Antonio at the city, and we have Sanders and Plows, we've got subcontractors that are helping us with that, we have material on-site, we've got operators, we've got support equipment out of the shop, so we are ready for those types of events, should they come. Traffic maintenance, we kind of touched on this earlier, so this is all of the preventative maintenance, as well as repairs for the signals and the signs, school beacons, et cetera. We are fully staffed in our traffic division, and they are, they started about a week ago or so on the preventative maintenance, so they are starting to work on, those typically take about three days per signal, so they're starting to knock those off. We've got about, we have sixty-four signals in the city, and then there's twenty-four, I believe, school beacons, so they'll be working through all those over the next several months. So this is, this is kind of a fun one, we bought some cameras, so this is some cameras to place out at strategic locations to, for surveillance, to monitor heavy dumping sites, illegal dumping sites. So we bought eight of these, seven of them are put throughout the districts in the city. These have the ability to email you pictures of what's going on, and then that obviously can be transferred to the police, or to code enforcement, or public works, or all of the above, and then we can, this is a pilot project, so with the city, so more to come on this one, but something that might be interesting to take a look at in the future. Next is our summer mowing schedule, so this is two hundred and thirty-three miles, and as we, as we talked about in the contract negotiations, we are looking at doing these in four weeks, so this will be a revolving four-week schedule. This is to, this is scheduled for a start in March fifteenth, and then that would go approximately to October fifteenth. So you will be seeing mowers out there come in about six weeks, eight weeks there. Next is key performance indicators, so our commitment to the city was that we would perform this work with certain priorities and certain deadlines that we would adhere to and perform to. So these are five of the, of kind of higher priorities that we're being, we are working to achieve. So the call center is a twenty-four-seven operation, that's a customer service element of our contract. We have traffic signals, again, if you have an emergency, making sure that those are up and running within eight hours, traffic signs, these are related to stop signs primarily, and yield signs, so the inventory signs that we need to get up right away. Potholes that are in the street that are severe, we do same day, and then roadway mowing, this is getting back to the four-week commitment that we made to the city. Next is secrete fix, the city has committed to this software, we've committed to this software, our future call center that we're going to have for the whole city will be entering requests into secrete fix, will be monitoring all the requests through this software, so we are being trained, have been trained, on utilizing this software, so all of our work orders will be contained in this, and will allow the council to get periodic reports, monthly reports, on how many requests and where those requests are as far as being closed out. Next is the stormwater management program, we touched on this a little bit earlier, we are committed to get an ordinance, ordinance to allow the city to have a stormwater MS four permit, this is through EPD, so Environmental Protection Department of the State. What's listed there is the six requirements of that permit that we will be administering along with city staff for the city. Roadway permit program, so currently the city does not have one of these, we have been utilizing what the council used to do, so our intention is to bring you some options as far as a new ordinance for this, creating a new program, that would be a city program, and what this would do is permit utility companies and others that wanted to work within your right of ways, and we would monitor that work, inspect that work, and make sure that the roadway is being taken care of. Street lighting, lighting management, so there's been some desire by the council and city management to look at some of the street light deficiencies within the city, so we are supportive of that, would help with any type of ordinance development that might even happen related to that, and also help with the street light approach, how is, how the street lights are going to be identified, as far as new street lights, how it was going to be paid for, either short-term as far as the install, and long-term as far as maintaining those lights, and who pays the bill. So traffic comming, the county had a traffic comming program, they had, were originally looking at sixteen requests, eleven of those the county collected data on, so that was speed and count data. Eleven of those, the county collected data on, so that was speed and count data. We are in the process of reviewing that, that data. We also are in the process of putting out counters of our own to do the other five that are yet to be, the data's yet to be collected. So that takes about roughly a month to get that data. And then we will evaluate that data and come back with a recommendation on what, if any, kind of traffic calming is necessary, on various requests. As a preview, the eleven requests, seven of them appears meets the criteria. We move forward with looking at some type of traffic calming mitigation. We are also looking at other cities, what they do in this, as far as traffic calming, as well as looking at the county's, the county's program. And we'll, we'll bring some examples and some things we'd consider related to this program. We also provide private development reviews for traffic. This is looking at any kind of traffic improvements related to a new subdivision or commercial development that might be impacting a signal or a roadway that might need some additional improvements. So we provide analysis and recommendations to the community development department related to those projects. And we've, to date, we've looked at seven, seven different projects within the city. Solid waste coordination, I touched on this a little bit earlier, helping with the public education, also helping with the program itself related to how, how best to move forward with solid waste. The other piece that we will be coordinating is with the haulers and the data that's provided from the haulers. Bringing that to the city and the council related to the customer base and what kind of things that we, that we need to do with the program. Transportation planning. Again, we provide this, this service to the city. It's developing budgets and working on funding for the various capital projects. Also working with GDOT, ARC, MARTA, SRTA, and, and the county related to partnerships and funding and how we can get, get more funding and more grants to do the things that we want to do. So that involves one of the meetings and representing the city and trying to find the best projects and the best funding for the city. Okay, so almost done. So where are we headed? So now we are in theory in the future, and we're off and running, and what does that mean? Well, we, we, we will have the citizen response center up and running January twenty-eighth. There's a note on that date. Contractually, we're on, we are supposed to have this up and running by November nineteenth. So we're a little bit ahead of, ahead of the contractual schedule. Oh, I'm sorry, February nineteenth. Go in the, go in the wrong direction here, I'm sorry. And so that is, we're very excited about that. That's going to be a great amenity, customer service opportunity for the city. And again, this will not only just be public works, this will be all of the departments, we handle yours. So this is just kind of a fun recap slide, shows kind of the foundation, some of the things that we think are important to get started early on. As you can see, there was traffic safety, street lighting, reducing the legal dumping of litter, creating some proactive maintenance. And then on top of that, some of the other things that we are working on, sanitation, right-of-way permitting, stormwater, the MS four permit. And then you've got the community involvement really is in all of these things. And then the capital projects, strengthening the city ordinances to support any of these programs. And finally, make the city of South Fulton a better place to live, work, and enjoy. And with that, be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baker.
No, I'm pretty much last.
Okay, Mr. Green. First of all, ladies and gentlemen, these is our public works department. I don't know about the rest of my council, but I get more calls about public works than anything else. So these are the people that you want to talk to, don't let them leave this room. Like, if you have something that you need to share with us. The question that I have to ask is about the funding mechanism for traffic calming. If I have a street in my neighborhood, like Pepperdill Lane, where people are speeding around the street and we want to get speed hills or traffic calming devices, there's a whole funding mechanism where the people who live on that street and all the pertinent streets have to pay for that. Are we looking for, are we looking into ways to subsidize that? Because that can be very expensive, it can be very hard in neighborhoods in my district to have a lot of renters to actually get home or to sign up, to sign up for those, you know, it's just hard to get the amount of cities that need it to enable those improvements.
Yeah, we are looking into that. That is the county processes that you're speaking of. So if I'm not mistaken, it's ninety percent for the street that the improvement is on and then contributing streets within the subdivision is seventy-five percent. We, we have some other models from other cities that we are looking at and plan to bring that forward to you for consideration. So there will be some other options. I guess to answer your question, yes, there will be some other options to consider depending upon how the council and the city would like to move forward as to how that is, how that is determined and how that is part of the program. So it's, to my knowledge, there's pretty much an open book as to how you want to do that. You know, subsidies, I guess, maybe your question is, is there any subsidy money out there for that?
No, my question is specifically that. When we haven't had our tour, we haven't had our meeting yet, but when we meet, that is, that is going to be on the top of each, and it's re, it's thinking of a different formula for our.
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Willis.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. And also I want to thank you for your service and, and your responsiveness to my constituents. I have seen a drastic change and you all have been very responsive to the needs of District Three. And thank you for helping with the spring street cleanup. I also have some questions. Do you all have the ability to break down, break down the reporting by districts?
Yes, we do. And actually, seed click fix is also, has that breakdown as well. So, but yes, we do have that.
Okay, so is there any way that Mr. City Manager can get that?
February report. And it'll be addressed in my report, because there's an upcoming thing in the city manager's report, but you should see it in February.
Okay, when in February, because I'm one prior.
In the February city manager's report that looks back on January.
Okay, so the District Three breakdown, I have a town hall on the fifth. Someone reached out to me and said Jacobs was going to come, okay, so I need it. Somebody was supposed to call me and I haven't gotten a call, so if you can. LaShawn, thank you, okay.
We're on board with that, so we're going to be touching.
Okay, thank you. And then the town, okay, you already answered that, town and pothole request. The before and after shots, I love that, because a lot of times people don't really realize how, what you all are doing unless they see the photographs. Mowing, I saw that you all are going to have a four-man crew. Is that an increase from the county? Because whatever the county was doing, I know we kept getting a constant complaint that they didn't have enough, they didn't have the resources. So is this going to be more aggressive than what the county, because we needed to increase that during the summertime?
Yes. So the county originally had the, the mowing schedule was every six weeks on a revolving schedule. And we're looking at four weeks. So our crew is considerably larger than four. So we have, you know, ten or twelve mowers that are planning for that, that operation, make that four weeks.
And it wasn't that they weren't doing a good job, they were doing a good job, it's just that with the, with the limited resources and the abundance of the illegal dumping in the summertime, it just sometimes got overwhelming. And so I'm glad to hear that you all are now going to place the cameras in the strategic high dumping spots because we need to really catch these violators and hold them accountable. Thank you so much.
Ms. Jackson.
I did my tour. What do you want to know?
I want to.
Okay. And I guess I did not see an immediate. But I did, after we had a conversation last council meeting, I saw a difference. But what I am wondering about, you said the dead wood, the trees that you actually pick up. I still have some areas that have not been taken care of. I ride my area. And I guess what I'm saying is, some things that I'm looking for, because we do have older homes, we can be manicured and we can look a, 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 a lot different. Does that make sense, Miss Wilson?
Yes.
And I think we, yeah, I identified some things and on North Cut, is it North Cut? Over, off of Jerome, I think we rode and we saw a lot of that. All they did was went and picked up, but that's about it. Okay, so if we can.
Well, we do have, I'd have to look at the schedule, but we do have brush cutters out there with the sidearms and we've got people following behind, picking up the.
I've seen a difference in the last couple of weeks. But I guess, let me ask you this, the long-term goal, will we have dedicated individuals for our district? Or is just one team that's going to be doing the anti-city?
Well, I have a, closer to one team, but you know, basically.
For a hundred thousand?
Well, we have multiple teams, where we won't necessarily have a team dedicated to your, to your area, or I'm sorry, district. The, the idea is to be nimble and be able to address issues as they come along, as well as staying on the schedule for maintenance. So mostly, what we'd like to do is work the maintenance schedule. But if there are issues that come up, we'll address those also.
Ms. Dr. Brown.
Thank you for the presentation, I think it was very thorough. One of the things I was curious about, you talked about the thirty-two dirt roads. And I've heard at different points, some people don't want them to be paved, some do. I'm, I'm curious, from an emergency management standpoint, are there implications? And how do you go about, you know, how would you go about polling just to really do a check to make sure that's in fact what residents don't want or do want? Because one of the things I'm thinking about as we get to like, create your budget, is we can start planning to address some of those issues as we find them to be the issue. So that's my question.
Let me answer this for you, Councilwoman Rowe. In, in the past, many of the residents with, where dirt roads are, they're opposed to paving the roads. The only one at this time that is for paving is Jones Road. And we also heard about Hall Road. The other ones, they still want to maintain the dirt roads. But what Eric mentioned through his presentation on the high-priority roads, those will be taken care of. So the roads will be in much better condition after the rainy season ends.
So y'all surveyed them, in other words?
Yes, all the, all the thirty-two miles were assessed by a vendor that specializes on dirt roads.
I'm saying, did you ask, you survey, do you survey the residents as well? I understand that they look at the condition of the road, but to find out if there's any change in that.
No, we have not done the survey. Typically, I've just got calls and then, you know, they get together and then they send their requests back to us.
I think it would be good, so you don't have two or three people, you know, dictating and asking the people on those roads at some point. So it's at least a systematic way we assess whether we put that like on a future capital improvement program.
Right, I think we can do that. While we're going, while we're going to be doing dirt road maintenance, I think we can come up with some kind of survey in the areas that we've got working.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, but thank you for your report. One of them is about the street sweeping schedule. Is that schedule going to be for all streets? Do we have to submit the streets that we want to be on the schedule, and how does that work?
So it's not for all the streets. It is for all curbed streets, for a concrete curb, and it's for the arterials and collectors. So the not, I guess the simplest way to say that, not the residential streets, or the local streets.
Okay, and then my next question is about the pilot program with the cameras. So is that going to be expanded?
Well, I guess kind of depends on how the pilot goes. If it's well-received and is doing what we hope that it might do, then we can, we can see if we need to expand it. Or obviously, we can make changes, these are mobile units. So if it's, if we find one area's not where we want it, we can move it to another area.
And then the last one is, tell me a little bit about the public education and public participation program.
Well, that is something that there's been actually, Mr. Valenzuela has been having a lot of those education meetings, town hall meetings with, related around the solid waste, the new ordinance, and what that means to the residents. So this would be assist, we, we have been assisting with that. And then also, any public education outreach going forward. And as we start collecting data from the haulers, there'll be some more education, some more outreach to the public. As those numbers start coming in, we start identifying any issues or questions that residents have. We'll also have a coordinator that can answer questions, meet with homeowners on solid waste issues, those kinds of things.
And then lastly, I guess for people that don't use the internet, then you're going to have to rely on receiving their calls for them to let you know, come to such and such a place.
We have received a lot of those calls, we have, we are aware of some of those folks. So trying to get the information out to them.
Scott.
So I know we have a four-week rotation, and you kind of alluded to it, but I just want clarity on the process. So if somebody calls in and says we have litter and debris on this certain area, what is your process not to get off schedule? Because we have a lot of that going on in my district, so I'm just trying to figure out.
If it's litter, and depending upon, obviously, it's situational, right? If it's in the road or something, that's, that's a little different than if it's on the sidewalk. Typically, we would like to stay on schedule and pick that up when it's scheduled. However.
Like if it's excessive.
Right, if it's excessive, then, then we would send, send out a separate crew.
And would that be the same for illegal dumping? So if we're using a seed click fix, would it take two days, three days to respond to that, or is it, so if I see a mattress in Villa Street?
Yeah, again, if it's in the middle of the street, we're going to go get it.
Okay, all right. My next question is dirt roads. There are a few dirt roads, I don't know if you all have that on your compiled list in District Two. Do you have a list that you can give out or let us know that we can either add to or take away? Or you know all of the dirt roads in District Two?
Yes, we'll, we'll make that available to the whole council, through our manager. And you can see all the, what we, what we're going to do this year.
And lastly, I do want to commend you all, the ride-along was wonderful and the team is awesome. I am probably one of the ones that worried you all to death. But I just love that you all are doing what you say you want to do and making sure that you stay on top of it, because my residents stay on top of me. So thank you for the good work. Definitely pick up the trees, the little brushes and everything that's falling down, because they do impact people, so they drive themselves. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, three questions. One, when grass is growing in between sidewalks, is that something that you all take care of?
Yeah, we would, uh, we'd spray that.
When, um, there are shoes that are hanging on wires, do you have that, do you all take care of that?
Would you guys stay, stay away from power lines?
Sometimes there's a power line, sometimes it's not, sometimes it's a total.
Again, um, if it's a power line, we just honestly wanna stay away.
Can, let me, let me, let me ask it differently. If we see that, can you coordinate with the power company and the phone company? Can, can people call their number, four seven oh five five two four three one one, um, and report that?
Or the C Click Fix.
Or a C, or the C Click Fix.
That's where, that's where.
All right, um, there, is there something in the C Click Fix app for that specifically?
Yes.
Just take a picture.
Yeah.
No, for that, I can take a picture. Then it asks you to, uh, match that picture to a particular issue. So I would ask that you please make sure that that is an issue, because that is something that, that pops up in our neighborhoods. And then lastly, is there a demolition fund to knock down bladecropes? Do you do, is that, is that, is that something that you do, or is that not something?
That would be, that would be code of enforcement, that would be code of government affairs.
Just wanted to make sure, thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Baker?
I just wanna say thank you, uh, for the ride-along. And it was refreshing that you guys, you know, talking to you two brothers, Joe. Y'all knew every place that I was going to before we went there. So it's great to know that y'all know those places and they've been identified, so we can expect a change in those, in the condition of those places. I do have really, uh, one quick question in regards to, uh, the subcontractors. Uh, what services do they provide? And are you, uh, utilizing local businesses from the city of South Fulton to provide those services, with those subcontractors?
So, um, I guess first off, we use them on various activities and it's, lots of times it's a supplement to our own folks, and sometimes it's just them. Uh, we do have a local contractor that act, subcontractor that works with us, um, on the dirt roads, for example. So, uh, he does the roads in Chattahoochee Hills and in South Fulton. Um, a lot, these are, I would say our other subcontractors are not local. However, a lot of our vendors, we try to deal locally on materials and vendors, so, uh, equipment rentals, um, uh, mechanics, uh, that we might use to work on bowers and things, Tony's, law, law and building service. Um, and so, and then we buy locally.
Now, is there, is there websites for local businesses in the city of South Fulton where they can go find you guys and apply to be available with you guys since you are doing, out and around these works?
Um, that's a good question. Uh, the, uh, we reached out to most of the ones that the county used to use. So we kind of used the county list, uh, of local vendors. And then we added to that list a little bit. Uh, so we kind of had a pretty good list to begin with, I guess would be, uh, my comment. Um, and, but I, I don't, I, I wouldn't say we have a solicitation out there.
Right, I think that we should probably figure out a way to just make that available to our local business owners so they, they can be a contributing factor too.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely would like to work with locals.
So if there's any way that you can open it up or find, or be resourceful for them, you know, it would be appreciated so that they can go to a website or somewhere, so they can have a shot.
We'll, we'll think about that, I'll take a look at that.
I appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, just two more questions. And I know in that way, I would get, we're gonna get out to you here. Retention ponds, is that, uh, there are a couple of retention ponds, not only my, probably within the city, that, um, do you all have any feedback on that?
Uh, yes, so we, uh, the thirty-three retention, uh, detention ponds that the, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah, retention detention?
Uh, that the county maintained previously. Uh, we have surveyed all those, we actually brought out one of our, um, GIS guys from North Miami Beach Project, and he helped locate all those, so we have them all on a map. Uh, we also have had, um, a couple of engineers go out and, uh, look at all of them and put together a maintenance program for each pond. So we do have a maintenance plan for the ponds, um, and we've identified, uh, certain issues that we may need to address in maintaining those ponds.
So is there any way you can give us those broken down in District? Cause I've had, I've gotten a few complaints about a few in District Three. And, and, um, specifically on Jones Road, there is one. Um, but if you could give us a breakdown. My last question is, when is, uh, Public Works gonna update Click Fix it? Because right now, um, if I were to go into Click Fix it and try to report a, um, a pothole, there's no specific, there, first of all, there's no section for Public Works. Uh, and there's no section for potholes. Uh, there's no section for, um, there is illegal dumping, but it's under the Community and Development section. And illegal dumping is really a Public Works issue.
Can, Councilmember, remember at the last meeting, we, we told you, I know you were remote, but they were going through training this week, I think they completed it yesterday? Actually, it was last Thursday. Last Thursday, so at that time, the items have been updated and is actually a new widget, um, for all of those activities on the website. The details will be included in the City Manager's Report. But it should be active, uh, effective tomorrow if it wasn't already up.
Okay. So tomorrow, they should, we should see a...
I think it's up now, right there. We'll confirm that before the City Manager's Report.
Okay, so will it be a section for Public Works?
City Manager's Report will address it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll address it in detail during the City Manager's Report when we go over the whole app.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I don't have any questions, just wanted to make a couple statements. As my colleagues talk about dirt roads, but they really actually talk about dust abatement. And, uh, who has the dust, the roads?
Fifty-four.
Dust abatement, is what you're gonna tell me, for the dust management? Or, uh, so I don't know, you, dust abatement isn't part of what you do, right? Okay, uh, lastly, and I say this, just to make a statement, winter is coming. We've been through so much, no winter time. We don't want to fail. I think I wear my City Manager out every day asking, hey, it didn't go. When the ice started coming, the trees started getting heavy and everything, I wanted to be on top of it, all right? I just wanted to put that out there for you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, sir.
Chief Financial Officer's report, Revenues and Expenditures, December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Brethren mayor and council, uh, we may have been told that we are debt-free, we finished paying our debt in December, but we need to know after paying our debt what's our financial status, where we are now, and where we need to go. So in December, on General Fund, we saved, this is the column where we received in December. And on the right-hand side, this column is what we have received from December, uh, from October through December. So in General Fund, we had revenues in December of three point six million dollars. In General Fund, and the way, from October through December, we received thirty-three million dollars. Confiscated funds, that's to do with the P D, we had received the two point, uh, two thousand eight hundred and thirteen in December, with a total of six thousand two hundred and ninety-one from October through December. Restricted grants, these are for our fifteen firefighters in the fire and rescue department. We had received one ninety-eight, three seventy-eight. All this money had been just transferred to the付on account because we are still owing the services that they provided before transition. Hotel motel, in December, we saved the fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-one. And from October through December is forty-three thousand. Remember, because you have not defined what to do with the hotel motel, so we still keep, that money is still there. I owe you, council, um, Doc Brown, you asked about how much would be the three percent. So everything that we have received, I think there's about hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is still there for hotel motel. Getting into expenses, in December, we spent fourteen point five million dollars in December. So you'll see that in, we spent a lot in one month, and we are going to get what we spent on there. And from October through December, we spent twenty-two million dollars. A nine-one-one, December only, is hundred and sixty thousand. In other words, we pay hundred and sixty thousand every month to付on bounty for the services that we receive for E nine-one-one. Then hotel motel, in December, we spent forty dollars, sixty cents. And October through December, hundred and twenty-one. The spend, expenditure in the hotel motel, all is that is to do with the bank fees. Uh, solid waste, we spent three hundred and twenty-five. Almost everything is to do with the mailing out, communication, newsletters and all that was spent on this one. We have not received many on revenues from solid waste that we still had to spend. That money, once we receive it, will refund General Fund. So all this expenditure, solid waste, is from General Fund. Out of these twelve mil, uh, fourteen million dollars we paid in December, twelve point three was for the turn, the debt that we had. So even though there's a big payment, twelve million of that fourteen was for the payment of the debt. So if you see only in December, you see we had a shortfall of eleven point, uh, eleven million, because the majority of that was the payment of, uh, the debt. But if you say from October through December, we received thirty-three million dollars and we spent twenty-two million dollars. We had more revenue of ten point four million dollars. That's where we should be looking for. But at the same time, you have to know that the, the majority of revenues came from taxes. And tax, we have already received about seventy-five percent of our tax. So revenues will be slowing down because the, the bigger part of revenue we save in October, November, December.
Can we ask a question you wanna go to the people?
Yes ma'am, if you ask.
Oh, you said, I can't end.
I think, if you wait towards the end, that would be fine, I can go back.
Okay, all right ma'am, thank you.
So where I've come from, revenue was the summer, but these are the details of our revenues, uh, that we budgeted in twenty eighteen, received in December, October, December. This is the balance of revenue we are expecting, and this is the revenue that we have received. As you will see, property taxes, we are, we saved the seventy-two percent by December. And then the next one is local option sales tax, we have also received about twenty-seven percent. So the majority of our revenues are coming from these two, uh, property taxes as well as the option sales tax. This is the summary of every, uh, part of revenues that we have. But this black part of it, the middle one, is what we budgeted for, and this is what we have received for each of those revenues. And the following one, again, is details of the first page that I did for expenses. So this is the department by department of expenses where we are, from District One up to, uh, debt service payment. So you'll see it's budgeted, how much we spent in the month of December, how much we spent in the quarter of October through December. The balance in the, those budgets, what's remaining for us to spend from, uh, January through September, and the percentage that we spent. Uh, this is the same, is to do with the expenses. The two, the outstanding two here, it shows about the expenditure, but at the same time, these are the two biggest expenses that we have. We have the police as well as the fire, that they have about twenty million dollars apiece, or they have about eighteen, and you'll see that the expenses are also high compared to the rest of them. This is the point where we need to focus and maybe we take note of what it is here, because this is our three-month cash flow. Uh, the mayor, last time again and again, you'd say, we don't have a problem of finances, but our problem is cash flow, is when the money is coming in, when we spend, and the, when can we go out, invest? Now we are talking about even going for investment. By then, we are talking about when can we grow and grow. So we started October one, we had four point four million dollars at hand when we started this fiscal year in October. So in October, we saved it for fifteen point five million dollars, that's in addition to what we started with. At the same time, in salaries, we paid one point six million dollars, that's only for the month of October. And we paid in, um, other operations, one point eight million dollars. A nine-one-one, we paid one forty-six. So in October, we paid three point six million dollars. We had a surplus, if you see, we received the fifteen, we had the four, so we had a total of sixteen million dollars. But we only spent three point six. So in December, in October, we had a surplus of eleven point nine million dollars. So we started sixteen million dollars, we moved that one in November. So we started November with sixteen point three million dollars. The majority of that was from taxes, because tax were due October the fifteenth. Then in November, we saved the eight point seven million dollars. So, and on our expenses side, in the month of November, we spent two point three million dollars. As you will see, that we spent one point six million dollars in salaries. Get into November, we spent two point three. There are two things here, we had added some employees, but majority of it, it was not, um, our payroll had not yet been processed, so not everything was included in the October. So you'll see here, we have the full processing of, uh, salaries in the November. In all, the total expenses in November were three point five million dollars. So we had a surplus of five point two million dollars. We ended up with sixteen, uh, two, uh, twenty-one million dollars in November. We took that, twenty-one million dollars, that's what we started with in December. In December, we saved the three point three million dollars. As you will see, in October, we saved the fifteen million dollars, November, eight point seven million dollars. Come December, we saved the three point three million dollars, our revenues are going down. In the December, we had payroll of about one point four million dollars. This is not all, so not every, uh, expenses in payroll were included in here. We may have processed the payroll, but benefits is a big part of payroll. So here, we did, we have not yet processed our benefits. That's why you're seeing it's smaller than it may be here, point three million dollars. In all, in... Having a deficit in December of eleven point six million dollars. But remember, we had the... But remember, we had the, uh, the one that we started with, then here, again, we had the, uh, all these supluses. At the end of it, regardless of this, uh, eleven point six million deficit, we still ended December with nine point nine million dollars over the expenses. So, we ended December thirty-one with the nine point nine million dollars to the good. That's what we started with January one. Having said that, revenues are going down. Expenses are remaining steady, or even going up. We are not looking at what we have now, but we are looking into how do we get into September thirtieth? How do we preserve the revenues that we have and minimize the expenses? The biggest part of it, the unfortunate part of it, is we do not have contingency. We do not have a cushion. Should we have expenses that we are not budgeted? We only left hundred thousand dollars as a contingency or rainy day fund. So, we just have to make sure that we use our expenses accordingly, or we use our expenses wisely, so we don't inflate our expenses. We live within what we receive. Come March, we have budget amendments. Budget amendments will say how much so far our revenues are compared with our expenses. So, where we're getting more revenues will make up for some areas where we have shortfall of revenues. The same thing with expenses. Some departments are spending, some departments are underspending. So, wherever the underspending will make up for those ones that are over, uh, they are overspent beyond their means. At this point in time, our, okay, there are some of these areas, just general updates. Seventy-five percent of our property tax have already been corrected. Remember, we never correct hundred percent. So, seventy-five, that was in December. Now, we may have up to, maybe we are in the eighty-something percent. Regardless, they, our tax commissioner, they try their best they can, but it is not possible to get hundred percent. We may get up to ninety, ninety-seven percent, but there will still be some areas that we will not get. The local insurance premium tax for twenty seventeen was received through Fulton County. We did not receive it because we were supposed to have filed the papers with the state January one, twenty seventeen. January one, twenty seventeen, we are not received yet, so we had to get it through Fulton County. Fulton County served the city for four months, January one through April thirtieth of twenty seventeen, and we finished the rest of the year eight months. We are anticipating Fulton County will give us a fair share of three point seven million dollars. Management is working within Fulton County to have our money there. Then we have, uh, our tax, uh, our budget, twenty-twenty budget. We are in twenty nineteen budget, but twenty-twenty budget will start come October one, twenty nineteen. We have to start now, and come February, we will be sending to you the schedule of the budget process, so that early March, we start the budget, and we have enough time. As you know, when we had yesterday, last year, we started a bit late this year, we want to start it earlier, so that we can involve fully the community, be part and part of our budget process. With that, I will entertain if there's any question.
Yeah. Mr. Kieran?
Um, I do have a question. Uh, the local insurance premium tax that we're going to receive, about how much is it?
So far, the county received the five point six million dollars. That money is already there, which the county received in October, five point six million dollars. So, if we are going to get our share compared to the, Fulton County served us, served the city for four months, and we saved eight, we will get, if nothing changes, we are expecting to receive three point seven million dollars.
All right, Mr. Kieran.
So, is that, uh, I see the annual insurance premium tax, three million dollars, is that, is that the year-to-date actual, let's see, why was that not in the, I would see that in twenty nineteen?
So, the trick of finance is always, we are, we are underestimating revenues, because you don't know, as you will see, there are some areas, revenues we projected, but we don't have. Some of them we will not have now, until maybe come April, uh, some, a good example would be business licenses. So, we budgeted for three million dollars. If everything goes well, we will get from Fulton County three point seven million dollars for this. That means we will have extra seven hundred thousand more than what we budgeted. However, there will be several line items where it will, they will not perform, so that one will make up for some shortfall somewhere else.
So, is there a reason we, is there a reason we build a budget on one hundred percent tax collection when we don't actually collect at that rate?
Actually, no, it's, that's where we are saying that even though we budgeted at a hundred percent correct, uh, a hundred percent correction, most of the times it's ninety-eight percent or ninety-seven percent. So, we have about three percent, and that three percent is likely to be made up some of overages, as you are seeing.
Okay, 'cause the last time I checked, I think you might want to check with, uh, Ferdinand, I don't think our collection rate is that high, but...
It's from ninety-two to ninety-eight, but it is for Solid West, from ninety-two to ninety-eight.
So, next year, when we do a twenty-twenty budget, can we make sure that we budget more accurately based on that tax collection number? 'Cause I'm a little nervous budgeting at a hundred percent when I know, I mean...
You never got to get to a hundred percent. We did include, remember, we had that, that, uh, we had to redo the taxes because of the assess how they did, and the second time, we did include the shortfall of either two percent, three percent. Yes, ma'am?
And so, that's my segue to this, um, and I know it was a lot, it was good news, and it was, uh, a lot of depressed that we are debt-free, but that's not necessarily, you know, the ability to build credit is the ability to borrow and pay off. And so, what we do not, what we're not able to dictate is if it's going to be a debacle on the county side on collecting our taxes. So, do you feel comfortable saying, you know, I heard somebody say, we're not going to have to borrow money? That's not a good thing, 'cause we do want to borrow money. And we may have to borrow money, depending on how they collect, or whatever happens on the county side, and how frequent we get our money, 'cause our bills are still going to have to be paid. So, I'm a little, I, I don't really, I'm a little hesitant in bringing about us being debt-free.
So, to say we are debt-free is a fact. We are debt-free now. Uh, even if we don't correct a hundred percent of whatever will come from the taxes you collected, see, they are there, but I can't, you to help me, I want the departments to help, so that we spend within our means. If we spend within our means, nothing comes up extraordinary that will force us to borrow. Believe me, we can make it to September. And that's what we should be striving to.
Okay. Uh, in this overall budget that you have provided, uh, I see confiscated funds, and is this a budget just for overall, what we are taking in? It's not based on general fund, because from my understanding, confiscated funds should not go in general? Is that a confiscated fund as it relates to police?
Yes, ma'am. All confiscated funds will be from the police. If you have seen there, I have put General Fund, then if the re, everything that comes, there are different funds.
General Fund is not here.
On the revenues, on the first page, I started with.
Yeah, I'm on the first page. I'm on this page, the very first page, overall.
On the revenue.
Here it is, general fund, I said, in December, we saved the three point.
Okay, now I'm sort of saying...
Then from there, then it's confiscated, fund is completely a different fund, it's budgeted, I see, because they're in a different bank at all.
Maybe I was lying. I'm on this, okay, well, I'll, I'll take it offline.
Yeah.
And then also Hotel Motel, that's another, are you putting that in?
It's a different fund, it's a different bank. Everything there, general fund is because it does go to the biggest, but the rest of them is different funds, different banks.
So, do we want to, okay, I'll take that offline, 'cause do, I, I'm just, we can't spend that. I mean, there's stipulations.
Hotel Motel, you can't spend until you stipulate, uh, you stipulate how you are going to spend.
And also confiscated funds.
Confiscated funds, so this is how it's being spent. We have received, whether I say four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, that money, as long as it's not part of the evidence, it's deposited, as the police money has to be deposited immediately to get, say, into our hands, it's deposited. Then the police chief will come up with the program of how they are going to spend that money, because we have to spend money within the guidelines of the state requirements, whether they have a program, whether they have got some, uh, training, whether they are renovating, renovation, it has to be our building. You can pay for some expenses. And that way, the city manager, the council, the mayor will know how we are spending that money, but it, the program will come through the police chief.
So, truly, we just want to really focus on, because of the stipulations around Hotel, confiscated funds, really, when it comes to operating our services, we want to just focus and hone in on that general fund number.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's where I'm confused.
Everything will be on the general fund. These others, just to let you know that here, we have some money, but it's not, they have got some limitations of how you can spend.
Right, so do you, can you, uh, when you present these financials, is there any way you could put like a footnote explaining that?
I have sent, I have sent a memo.
Okay.
With this, there is a memo.
Right, well, if I shared this information with my public, I mean, with the, with my constituents, I think if we had, like, if you put an asterisk by Hotel Motel tax, an asterisk by confiscated funds, and maybe put like a footnote on the bottom of the financial?
I can do that, but I think if you share with the memo, it will work very well, because everything that is here is summarized in details in the memo. That has come before this, but I can do that.
Okay, yes, that's my request, for you to do that. Thank you.
Okay, seeing that, no more asking in the queue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President? I take you to the city manager's report, a monthly report to elected officials, December twenty-eighth.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excited to have some announcements that I think, uh, you will, uh, find pleasing. I think, uh, one of them came through, uh, our partners at Jacobs, uh, one with the call center that, uh, as of Monday, January twenty-eighth, will be twenty-four hours, seven days a week, uh, with twenty-five call takers. Key metrics that I think are important to you guys is that all calls will be answered within thirty seconds, and all calls will be resolved within three minutes. And so, that means that when someone calls our call center, they will get prompt service, be able to contact somebody, and have their issue resolved. An added area that I think you'll find very important is not only is the call center integrated with our C-click Fix model, but our tail line, which we believe has been a quality support, but needs a little bit of, uh, boost, will also be connected to the twenty-four hour call center, so it won't be limited by the time that our staff, uh, is actually at City Hall. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we have updated the monthly city manager report, which you will find in your package, which you receive Friday, but will also be up on the website tomorrow, joining all the rest of them. And there are a couple of, uh, items within the city manager's report that I wanted to highlight for you. Number one is an update, so that you can track the zoning applications and certifications by month, so that is included within the city manager's report. It also now includes the public works report, and it's also done by task order. So, you're actually able to see every public works task order and when it was rectified, which you couldn't see before. So, that's included in this city manager's report. Uh, I am probably most excited about, uh, a council-specific report. I know that early on, specifically around the time that we were, uh, recruiting our police chief, uh, there were questions about transparency and responsiveness. And so, what you will find is a report on open records requests as well as council requests. And one of the key things that you'll see from twenty eighteen is that we had over four hundred unduplicated open records requests, and they were solved at a rate of ninety-seven point seven percent, and the ones that were outstanding have since been rectified, and they were only outstanding because the three-day period had actually, uh, took us over into twenty nineteen. So, uh, open records is a hundred percent rectified. Um, I'll note that that data is only since May, and, uh, would thank you for, uh, allowing us to hire a records administrator who helps to support that effort. But what has also occurred is that the council, uh, requests have also been tracked and documented. And so, we have, uh, duplicate requests of, oh, over six hundred requests. We have taken out the duplicates and aligned them by departments, which you will also see in there, and so it takes that number down to about two hundred and thirty-seven. What that means is, is council member from District One and a council member from District Seven have a similar request, we just combine it and try to satisfy it at the same time. We're at about, uh, eighty percent, if you do it unduplicated, if you include the duplications, it's about eighty-eight percent. The other thing that you should note is that some of those responses, if they should be allocated directly to the contractor, um, for example Jacobs, then we actually pull that out and just include it in their report, so those numbers would not be included. Uh, in addition to that, um, when we look at public works, um, and I'm, I'm thankful Jacobs didn't spill the tea just yet, but we will be bringing forward to you a Keep South Fulton Beautiful campaign that aligns with the, uh, pilot for the cameras, and so we'll be doing a brief work session on that to highlight the different public outreach that we'll be doing to educate people on dumping, sanitation, and things of that nature. Uh, I think, uh, another piece, now that the C-click Fix, uh, app is fully integrated, and everyone has been trained, and we'll be launching our call center, it is now time for us to launch our transparency initiative, uh, officially, so we'll be bringing that, uh, back to council as well before we, uh, publicly launch it. But I think the, the really, uh, cool thing about that is that all of these tools that we have for the public are actually now live, but, uh, and I know Councilmember Khalid, this is the first council meeting, he didn't, uh, mention it, so he must have known I was going to talk about it. The South Fulton one oh one will launch with a webinar that highlights these new transparency tools, actually teaching our residents step by step how to use the app, the call center, and these other tools that allow them to be very engaged in our governance. And so, we'll do that in February. Before we develop an official date, we'll bring it back to council, but I'm trying not to smile, 'cause I'm really excited about that. Um, and finally, uh, the final piece that we've added to the city manager's report is the actual last page, and it is something that we've been talking about for a very long period of time, and it is the City of South Fulton's dashboard. And so, while it is not final yet, the actual, uh, we'll cover, we're kind of temporarily calling it the citywide three-one-one dashboard, but as you see, it'll actually cover a little bit more than that, and it'll be a very diverse report that covers everything from open request, uh, to the average closure time, transportation, open records, every aspect of the city's performance, you'll be able to see in real time, and it'll be live on our website. So, we're super excited about those activities. And so, with that, I will, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember, for your request that you asked about, so I actually pulled up my laptop and checked, um, you can go to the website right now, and you can actually, um, post your C-click Fix report. It is on the website, it's actually been live on the app since, um, January eleventh, but it wasn't live on the website until all staff had been trained about it, and we'll go over it again in depth during our, uh, South Fulton one oh one webinar to take place in February.
Okay. Mr. Khalid? About, I'm sorry? Okay. So, uh...
So uh, so the general was killed in twenty seventeen, I was so mad, I moved in there, I found some money. Uh from the parks department, and it was forty thousand dollars. When we transitioned, the forty thousand dollars went missing. We put the uh, we put the money back in the budget in twenty eighteen, and it's been six months. See lights going up all over the city, but that Creel Park is still dark.
Well, and there'll be a lot, I actually, I'm sure you didn't see it, because you're probably en route here. But provided you guys a very thorough detailed memo uh regarding lighting uh across the city. Highlighting where the actual, cause there's a difference between the, what we'll call the public lighting and the residential lighting. It defines the difference between the two, which lighting activities have been uh moved forward. Some of that because there were contracts with Fulton County, and the process by which we'll be implementing the remainder of lighting. So not only is Creel Park, you know, one of the areas for which we're looking at lighting, you've got Cedar Grove. You also have some activities that take place in district uh two as well. So that issue is for everyone, and so we have the funding available. I think one of the things that highlighted from Mr. Malazie's uh report is the timing and the process for which we implement these are very important. With about seventy-five percent of all of your taxes being collected so far. And us not quite being at the halfway point of the fiscal year with not much income coming in. But very high payroll and things of that nature, we are prioritizing the release of these activities. And so we haven't forgotten about any of those lighting requests, but I think that lighting memo along with the CFO's report will shed light on the process.
So I read the memo, um I see Mr. Phillips here, I just, so so this is great, but Creel Park, I mean, we we have, we have, we had a contract. That we we were, we were, we were far, far down the line, so I just, I I don't wanna be that guy, but like.
Well, it's fine to be that guy, we should be pretty frank.
That that with that there will be lighting.
So we can bring that back to you to the next council meeting, and we should document that. And bring back a report on the timing, not only for your uh activity, but projected timeframes for all of the council requests. Because I think about every person I'm looking at has a lighting inquiry request, so it'd be unfair to only single out Creel Park. And also say, when we talk about what occurred during Fulton County, listen, when that transition happens. It's just like these assessment, I mean, these uh assumptions that we were talking about contract, they go away.
I got you, I just, I just, I mean, you know.
I understand.
It's been two years and my residents just wanna know if there's gonna be lighting.
And we'll make sure to bring that back to you.
He's staying all night, is there any way I can just find out what happened with the lights that we already had?
Um if Mr. Phillips knows, sure. Again, I know, anything that happened at Fulton County before the transition, there's no control.
With respect to the transition issues, I have no substantive information on that. Um I can tell you that I am working very closely, almost on a daily basis with Mr. Walker and Mr. Valenzuela from our general services department. To make sure that we have full assessments of the lighting needs at all of our parks. The seventeen locations we have, four of those are under Graystone Power, the other thirteen are under Georgia Power.
I hear you, I'm sorry, I don't wanna cut you off, but it's late, I just wanted to know what happened with. Had we already identified a company when we left off?
Right, so that reference was specific to a company that had uh a wifi system connected to their lighting. We did engage that company, there were some maintenance concerns, so when we talked to them about the process for maintaining those structures. They didn't really have a maintenance policy in place, so that gave us some pause. Cause we wanted to make sure that whatever we purchased, we could adequately maintain. So that option did not play all the way out, because that vendor wasn't able to kinda tell us what the maintenance uh process would be if we were to purchase that lighting system.
Thank you.
The state of the city, what, you were supposed to give us a a report on that, and. And um I guess I wanna update on when are we gonna start working on the citywide video that highlights everybody's focus group in this year?
So the short answer on two, the state of the city proposal is about done, I think. But I can give you a a higher level, I prefer to give it to you in writing, and so we didn't have it prepared today. As you can see, we had an aggressive agenda and a few items, but very quickly, the overview for the state of the city is very similar to any of those. That you've seen from the other cities kind of as a model. Uh while also leveraging the very unique uh nuances from each one of the districts. As well as some key activities, including uh the ban from Westlake, potentially using some of the facilities that are. Uh like the Westlake Auditorium would be another example. But procuring a service or multiple services to deliver the state of the city. Uh one for everything from in uh invitations and coordinating day of activities. Uh from the hospitality piece, as well as the development of uh videography. Think the other part is uh coordinating the, I don't wanna call it a celebration, that that would be too cheesy. But it has been a monumentous, monumental achievement of transitioning the city. Uh also really under a two-year period, and so highlighting that. The actual video that you're referencing, we have a video that we have developed from uh. What do you call this? Uh our annexation activities. And so using a similar model, plan to procure uh and leverage some key activities to be able to develop that. I prefer though to talk about the video during our executive session, cause it kinda ties in to some of our our other activities. But we, we do have a commitment from the same group that developed the video with Eritropolis that that you guys saw. At their state of the Eritropolis to develop ours.
I've seen the video, and it's all those are nice video, but that's not what, and we can talk about it in the executive session. Because that is not what, I don't, I don't think, that's not what the majority of the council is asking.
Just to develop the person who developed it is what we're highlighting, but some of that stuff ties into our uh litigation, real estate. Litigation and real estate activities, I would prefer to highlight it in the executive session, that component.
That takes you to the city attorney's report.
I have nothing further, ma'am.
Wonderful. Thank you, Brett. That brings you to the mayor and the council committee.
Uh without the ban. Uh thank you everybody for staying, what is this like, uh I don't have a budget, so I'll be really brief. On the fourteenth of February, I will be uh on a field trip with Lexington Hughes students, who will be going to the Civil Rights Museum. So if you have a student at uh Lexington Hughes, please uh make sure they see Mr. Rohan or the administrator. Uh Rashida Armstrong, uh thank you so much for coming out today.
First, uh I I sent an email out to council, this 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 one is for council. But I sent an email out a while ago about us thinking about um our anniversary, obviously it's gonna be big, but now that we're on transition. We are now officially ninety-nine days away from that, so I think that, you know, a little more than three months, we should probably start hitting the box. If you want to do something, how we wanna do it. And then um for council and the audience, I I just wanted to say to Mayor Broton Baker, I think that's reason amazing thing we did tonight with. The ban the box ordinance and this story that you coordinated with Channel Two, I don't know, me and you all saw that about a young man named Brandon. Whom uh Mayor Broton Baker mentored. But it really explains why that ordinance can do so much for so many people in our community, so. Uh I'm gonna try and get that story up on Khalid cares dot com, I'll be asking Channel Two, put it on their site, we're gonna work it out. But that, thank you all for coming, South Fulton, brother.
Thank you guys for being here tonight, and uh I really don't have anything to say, I am having a state of the district five brunch on February fourth. Um we need R S D Ps if we plan on being there, we've had a lot of response, and it is limited seating, but we'll see you then.
Thanks for everyone that's still here, um I just want to um especially thank those who came out and talked about the landfill. Know how I feel about it, we've had a lot of conversation about it, and I thank you for coming, and letting the whole world know about it now. And I'm almost sure that we're gonna get a solution, really soon. It's overdue, everybody knows it now, but everybody knows what needs to happen. So thank you so much, and I'm so sorry that you had suffered for so long, thank you.
Thank you for all the presence that attended tonight, and uh again, thank you for all of your prayers, thoughts, cards. And well wishes, and I'm glad to be back. Uh District Three will have their inaugural uh town hall on February fifth. We will have very important partners that will be there to address co-enforcement, public works. Uh we will have our planner there to talk about updating the zoning ordinance. And we will also have, oh, police, we will have Chief Meadows there, we will have Chief Hughes there to talk about public safety. So it's very important that you attend. Uh additionally, uh we will be, I will be highlighting the academic achievements of all the schools in District Three. Uh we would, we need to talk about what our schools are doing. Uh that's one of the platforms uh of our, of this council, the mayor and this council. Uh to support our education system. Uh it is a direct correlation to our economic viability. And I am really happy that our schools are progressing in District Three. So we will be ordering uh Wood Creek Elementary uh next, and also Camp Creek. And I have arranged for all three of the schools to come in and uh tour our court system. Uh sit through a court process, a a uh the court process so they can get a better understanding of how the municipal system work. And I'm working with our state legislators to uh try to coordinate a trip uh down to the Capitol. And so that's my way of supporting the schools in our district, and um I think that.
Finally, no, um thank you all for coming out to um our district uh town hall meeting on last Monday. We had really good attendance, and I got a lot of wonderful comments um from the residents that attended. So um always stay focused and listen to what's happening in your city. Um please continue to engage your elected officials, because that's what you elected us for. Also too, wanna let you know that on February the sixth, if there are any seniors that are interested in going with me to the Capitol. Um it is senior day at the Capitol, so please join me on February the sixth. Um you can also um reach out to me, you all call me, you all email me, you do everything. So you know where to find me, but you can also get D two news, if you text it, if you're mobile savvy, to D two, text D two news. To two two eight two eight. And lastly, I will be speaking to um some young ladies who are interested in running um for office. And on February the ninth, I will be speaking at Agnes Scott. There, um this will be a great opportunity for those young ladies who are interested in running for office. To come out and hear some of your elected officials speak. And then also too, on February, February the twentieth, I will be hosting the economic development tour for District Two for businesses. And interested developers that would like to attend, thank you and have a great evening.
Quick update, I wanna thank everybody who volunteered for the two M L K service projects that occurred in District One on yesterday. Who weathered the cold weather, we actually um painted three meals inside a Philip Randolph, and we did a cleanup on Cascade Road. We missed you there, we hope to have you back next time. Um in addition, we had our, um I'll be hosting my town hall meeting on Monday, January twenty eighth at Wood Creek Library. As well as for the month of February, um I have a much learned career speaker series for our high school students at Westlake. And so um that runs the entire month of February. And last but not least, I have an economic development tour on February twenty second, that's the second one, and I'm very excited. We've gotten great response, so we're gonna keep it up, thank you.
Okay, two things to add, and I want to thank the people who wrote the show down. I had some people calling red day, they also concerned about uh Fort Villas and Mozak. So uh they talked to Chief Meadows today, uh I still achieve this head of the program, we're gonna make sure we deal with that as well as everybody. So that thing I wanna say is, I wanna thank everybody uh who wrote me and called me about the death of my niece. And I'll be leaving out on Friday going to Fort Lauderdale, and I'll be back on Monday, so I'll tear it up when I get back. But I wanna thank you all so much for your letters and condolences, uh and I refer it to my family, okay?
Alright.
I say it, I remove the curtain.
Yeah, no objection, no objection. Yeah, go on, I'm sorry, man, thanks for the.